Meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Ragan.
Here.
Mayor Lieutenant Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Davies.
Here.
Councilmember Heckey.
Here.
And Councilmember Odenberg.
Here.
Everyone has a thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor John Lopez from the First Baptist Church, who will lead us in the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Mr. Smith.
Our Father, we thank you for this opportunity that we have together to discuss the business of the city. Lord, we understand that all those elected positions are ordained by you, so I pray that they would take their responsibility seriously as business is discussed this evening. Lord, we pray it will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by city's staff. Consent items will be considered first and may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. We will then remove the item from the consent agenda and will consider it in the listed sequence for comments at that time. All right. Anybody have any questions about the consent agenda? Yes, sir?
I'd like to have fourteen removed, please.
Okay.
Do you have conflict with those hammer choices? I do not. Do not. Do not.
Anything else from the audience on the consent agenda? Counsel?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to have item number seven, item number 12, and item number 13 removed, please.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Michael Bigley, Tahachbee, I'd like to have item two removed.
Item two is not on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Somebody report that.
Anyone else? Counsel? Anyone else?
Motion to approve consent with those items removed.
I have a second.
A second.
Moved and seconded in all her favors, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a five-zero vote. At this time, we will have audience oral and written communications, and I would like to remind you tonight, because we have a lot of people who probably are going to want to make comments, we are going to be using our timer tonight, and I would ask you to please hold your comments for three minutes. The City Council welcomes public comments on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. We respectfully request that this public forum be utilized in a positive and constructive manner. Persons addressing the council should state their name and area of residence and the matter of city business to be discussed. Does anyone have any comments from the audience?
In regards to...
That's not on...
Anything that's not on the agenda. Counsel? All right. All right, there's no comments to be made?
I have a comment.
All right.
How's everybody doing today? It's been a very interesting night tonight. I have tried and tried and tried and tried my hardest to...
Oh, I'm sorry. Can I have your name and area of residence?
I'm Quinn Davies, I live in Carrollway.
Thank you.
All right. Two days before the election, I was a victim of assault in my home, and these people smashed a bunch of stuff in my house and in my front yard. I was hurt, and they sold my voter registration list. Now, let's just be very clear. I understand how elections work. I understand how early voting works. I know that this person could have contacted enough people to give you 180 votes. Let's just be very clear on that. But my voter list was sold, and the next day, this person sent me a text message saying they were calling my supporters and telling them not to vote for me and things like that. Well, at that point, I went to the police station and asked them to recover the voter list. There's a lot of reasons. They're using it without permission. And it's not just a crime against me, it's a crime against my supporters and people who donated to me during the election. And it's actually an assault on our democracy, because we live in a free and fair society, a free society, democratic society. And at the time, I decided not to make an issue, because I didn't understand, I was very, there was a lot of things going on in my life. I'm actually from Thousand Oaks, and that's the following day, there was a mass shooting, and then the fire that almost burned my father's house down, and my sister's house almost went. And so, I decided to lay off it, and I didn't want to add any controversy or scandal to the election. It was already contentious. It had nothing to do with any candidates or anybody in the city, you know? But when a couple of weeks went by, I learned by looking at the history reports that the people who attacked me, and the police did call the person and had them return the list, which showed that they were in possession of it. I was looking at the history reports, and I found out that the people who staged this attack were the ones that called the police from Golden Hill, Third Street. And that's when I decided I wanted to talk to an officer. And it's quite amazing that, basically, I was just run out of the police station, and my report was not taken seriously, taken at all, you know? And we're all, we should all have equal protection under the law, every single one of us, whether we agree or disagree. I'm sorry, are you smiling?
No, sir. I'm scratching my chin, I'm sorry.
But there's been an issue going on where, there's been a few things that have happened to me, where I cannot get up to the police department to take a report from me or do anything about it. I had a situation about a year ago where a person who had assaulted me previously had staged an attack in my front yard, and in spite of having a restraining order in hand, this person was not arrested. Then, that same night, this person pursued, found me at another friend's house, chased me in the car, rammed my car intentionally. I sped straight to the police department. You know what they did? They said, "You're drunk. You hit somebody, and you're trying to cover your ass right now." That's what, basically, they told me. And we went back and forth, and finally, we knew the bright lights were out. You know what I blew? Point zero zero nine. Not point zero nine, huge difference. Point zero nine, you go to jail. Point zero zero nine, that's almost nothing.
I'm sorry, but you're out of time.
Okay, well, yeah. You're gonna have to deject me at this point.
I would like to say that we can have staff contact you.
No, we're not going now, Madam Mayor.
Sir, your time's up.
I have contacted your city manager, and every time I contact with my grievance, and I try to keep this behind the scenes, not make a big scene about it, I continue to be harassed by the police, to be arrested, falsely arrested.
You're out of time. I'm sorry.
Actually, you're out of time.
We can discuss this with you after the meeting.
And then you can follow the line again.
I have tried to discuss. I was referred to the city manager. Remember, the first time we met, I had an issue that I brought to you and Dennis Walstrom. And then, a week later, I get falsely arrested. You guys are trying to grant me these trumped-up, various charges that I'm a rock star.
If you don't sit down, I'm going to have to have you removed from the chambers. I'm sorry. We will try and contact you and try and get this sorted out.
Okay.
All right? Thank you.
Good night, good luck.
Anyone else in the audience? Any other public comments? All right? If not, we're going to move on to item number seven. And Mr. Heckey, what was it that you wanted to discuss about that?
Item number two.
No, I'm sorry. Good job. Mental. Number two, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jesse Maddox. I'm an attorney with Lieber-Cassidy-Widmore. I am an employment law attorney. I'm here to discuss an investigation report that we've received from an outside investigator, and I'll go into the reasons and the details of the report. The purpose of this kind of mini presentation is to address it with the council and leave it up to you as to what your options are and what you want to do with the information. First, I'll just tell you how I became involved in this. Your city is a member of a liability pool called the Employment Risk Management Authority, IRMA for short. IRMA covers, basically, your employment cases when you have an employee that claims harassment, discrimination, retaliation, anything that they're suffering that they feel is unlawful in their employment. IRMA covers that. We are on IRMA's approved list of attorneys, and when these complaints that led to this investigation came to IRMA, that got me involved. This initially started with a complaint that was submitted in April of 2018. Now, this complaint was similar to several other complaints the city had received up to that point. However, there was one major difference. The difference was it claimed gender harassment. As the city looked into the complaint, there were additional complaints that were similar. When you have a harassment complaint that's submitted, when it's based on a protected category like gender, race, disability, all areas that we call protected status areas, when a protected status area, when it's protected by the Fair Employment Housing Act, when you get a complaint that alleges one of those categories has been violated, the city has a legal obligation to investigate that complaint. It's required under the law to investigate that complaint. So when the city received this, it came to me, we looked to an outside investigator to fulfill the city's obligation to investigate the complaint. In addition to this complaint, there were several others from city employees. In all, there were seven complaints that were investigated during this investigation. The two that involved protected categories under the Fair Employment Housing Act were gender harassment and harassment based on ethnicity. The other complaints were based on similar alleged misconduct, including intimidation, bullying, interference, undermining the positions of city employees, and defamation, all by you, Councilman Heckey. We contracted with an investigator by the name of Michael Heinz. Michael Heinz is based in Santa Clarita, California. As I mentioned, the Employment Risk Management Authority, IRMA, has kind of control over the investigation. They have a list of approved outside investigators that meet professional standards. Mr. Heinz is on that list and has done multiple investigations involving similar allegations for the Risk Management Authority. Mr. Heinz was given complete autonomy in the investigation. In all, he interviewed 15 different witnesses. There were witnesses who were identified that initially said that they would participate and then later chose not to participate. Specifically, Councilmember Heckey, and at the time, Councilmember Dennis Walstrom refused to be investigated or be interviewed as part of the investigation. And I will clarify that. Mr. Councilmember Walstrom refused to participate in the investigation at all. Councilmember Heckey was contacted in August of 2018, initially agreed to be interviewed as part of the investigation, and then decided that he did not want to be interviewed until November of 2018. And the investigator told him that he had moved forward with the investigation, and that long of a delay wasn't, could not, he couldn't have that long of a delay in issuing the final report to the city. Now, we had seven different complainants. As I mentioned, gender harassment was one of the main complaints that initiated the investigation. That allegation was unfounded. There was not sufficient evidence to sustain that Councilmember Heckey had harassed anyone because of their gender. The complaint regarding ethnicity harassment was also found to be unfounded. The investigator found that while the manner in which Mr. Heckey questions most staff is generally considered to be rude and condescending, it is nonetheless within his purview to hold various staff accountable. Basically, the investigator found that none of Councilmembers, Councilmember Heckey's communications with the complainant that caused her to make the complaint were based Now, there were four findings that were sustained, and all of them fit the same kind of mold or same pattern of conduct with city employees, whether current or former city employees. One complaint in particular involved a city employee who was called to perform work at his work site out at the airport. Councilmember Heckey approached that employee and engaged him in a manner that the employee felt was physically intimidating and hostile. Councilmember Heckey demanded at that point that that employee call the city manager on the spot or call his supervisor on the spot. That employee, up until the gender harassment complaint came in, feared for his safety, feared for his job.
Excuse me, we need to have order.
Based on the interview that the investigator conducted, he sustained the allegation. The investigator found that it was determined more likely than not that Councilmember Heckey had acted in an unprofessional and hostile manner toward a city employee who had merely arrived to perform his duty. A second complaint involved another city employee who had merely performed her duties when she received a complaint from outside of the city regarding an elections issue. In fulfilling her duty, that employee passed along that complaint. After passing along that complaint, she began to suffer the same type of harassment and intimidation that many of the witnesses claimed that they suffered. The investigator found that this employee was intimidated and treated in an unprofessional manner by Councilmember Heckey in August 2016, prior to his election to council, when he claimed he could not find who reported a complaint of elections fraud to the Kern County District Attorney's Office and have them terminated. This caused the employee to fear retaliation for the performance of her official duties, for laying the complaint alleging Heckey's residency being outside the city should he be elected to the council, which occurred in November 2016. On March 2018, on March 1st, 2018, Councilmember Heckey submitted an email to the city manager requesting a criminal investigation to identify the city employee responsible for making the 2016 election fraud complaint against him, causing that employee to fear for her job security. In regard to the same complainant, there were allegations of harassment, interference with her duties, unprofessionalism. The investigator found that it is reasonable to conclude that Councilmember Heckey likely made a threat about finding who forwarded this information to the DA's office and having that employee terminated. Additionally, issues involving the airport have also been unnecessarily contentious, indicating Mr. Heckey may have difficulty discerning his role as a city executive and a businessperson engaged at the airport. As a councilperson, a position of city leadership that carries real and perceived authority, such words cannot be assumed to be hollow remarks. It was determined more likely than not that Councilmember Heckey intended to threaten the employee's job security. This allegation of intimidation and unprofessional behavior is sustained. A third complaint alleged that Councilmember Heckey posted defamatory messages on his Councilmember Heckey for a council Facebook page. The investigator sustained that allegation as well, finding that Councilmember Heckey posted defamatory messages on a public Facebook page around November 2016, about 10 days after becoming a city council member, causing a now-former employee to fear for her job security and reputation. And finally, we have complaints that were sustained involving the police department. First, with respect to crime statistics that were reported in 2018 by the chief of police during an open session, open session council meeting. Councilmember Heckey questioned those statistics and accused the chief of presenting false statistics regarding reduction in crime. With respect to another incident involving security at the school district, Councilmember Heckey and Councilmember Walstrom went outside of the Tahachbee Police Department, contacting a CHP lieutenant and the Kern County sheriff to get information about security at the school district and help with police department oversight. The investigator sustained the allegations of undermining the chief of police and interference with the city employee's duties. He found Councilmember Heckey met with the Kern County sheriff and spoke with the CHP lieutenant by phone regarding Tahachbee safety issues. Each had referred Heckey to speak with his local police. The CHP lieutenant further confirmed Heckey had insisted on having CHP officers provide some assistance with traffic enforcement at Tahachbee schools, and mentioned that Tahachbee Police Department officers lacked this training. The lieutenant said he told Councilmember Heckey he would plan for mutual aid coverage if a request were made by the chief of police. With respect to the sustained finding of interference with police operations, he found while it is proper for elected officials to seek information from the veteran of the community, it appears Councilmember Heckey, along with Councilmember Walstrom, unnecessarily sought information about police planning and training for school violence scenarios in Tahachbee outside of their own community. Okay, why is the investigation important? Why are the sustained findings important? They're important because they all involve the same pattern of behavior and theme of a council member exceeding your role as a council member and acting individually. The council, as you know, can act as a body. Once an individual council member steps out of that role, there are consequences that can occur to the entire city, and you can talk about some of the legal consequences. But your role as council members is defined in your municipal code. Section 2.04.090 specifically addresses city council and city manager relations. The city council and its members shall deal with the administrative services of the city only through the city manager, except for the purpose of inquiry, and neither the city council nor any member thereof shall give orders to any subordinates of the city manager. The city manager shall take his orders and instructions from the city council only when sitting in a duly held meeting of the city council, and no individual councilman shall give orders or instruction to the city manager. Your municipal code also defines the role of the city manager and provides the city manager with the authority of oversight of city employees. Now, the legal consequences when one of you exceeds your role as a council member and acts individually, it raises questions of individual liability and it creates the potential for city-wide liability. Individual liability, if there is a situation like this where you have a claim of harassment, and it's very easy, I see it all the time, it's very easy for someone who's being harassed, even if that harassment is not based on a protected characteristic, for that employee to turn around and say, "This is because of this protected characteristic," and file a lawsuit. And with the change in the sexual harassment laws that just occurred on February 1st, on January 1st, all it takes is one incident. One incident for an employee to file a lawsuit and go all the way to a jury. And you can be sued individually for that harassment. It's not harassment against the city. It would be, well, it is harassment against the city, but it also could be alleged individually, and you have personal liability at stake. There are also immunities within the government code that we rely on frequently to get cities out of lawsuits, to get public agencies out of lawsuits. When you step outside your role as a council member, just as if you were a city employee who stepped outside of your role as an employee, you lose those immunities. You lose defenses. City liability, if you're stepping out of your role as an entire council in addressing individual employees, other law enforcement agencies, in your individual capacity, those are admissions that can be used against the city if it goes to trial. Again, loss of immunities, those same immunities apply to the city as a whole if the city gets sued. If you have an individual that's stepping out to act in what he or she believes is their own personal beliefs, it results in a loss of immunities, not only for that individual but also for the council as a whole. We have retaliation, harassment, discrimination, all of those under the Fair Employment and Housing Act. We have now set the stage for multiple employees who all claim that they feared for their jobs to have potential discrimination or retaliation lawsuits against the city. And lastly, we have, of course, the costiness of the investigation that we've just gone through because of what's happened. Now, there are not very many options a council can take as a whole against an individual council member. Under the law, you may have heard about some of these options for corrective action. One of the options is public censure. That would involve the entire council taking action to publicly condemn Councilmember Heckey's conduct. That is protected under the law, if that's an avenue that you choose. There's also a procedure called quo warranto that involves going to the attorney general, asking the attorney general to initiate proceedings to remove someone from office because that person is not legally fit to be on the council. This is not one of those situations. There's no indication here that Mr. Councilmember Heckey does not meet all the requirements to be on the council. And then the last option is the one that I would recommend that you take in this situation with your training. AB 1661 was the law that was enacted in 2016, and you've... You've all probably been through the training recently or in the not-too-distant past. That requires training every two years about the laws in the Fair Employment and Housing Act, and that includes specific training about bullying, which an outside investigator has found in this situation. With that, I will leave it up to you, but I wanted to report to you on the findings of the investigation. Thank you.
How much money does it cost?
Mr. Short? Excuse me. All right, please keep in mind that you each have three minutes. State your name and area of residence. And please, audience, you want us to be polite to you, and we need you to be polite during these proceedings, or I do have the authority to clear the room with the police chief.
Dennis Wonkew, Blackwell Drive. I'd like to clear up a couple things. One, they said that I wouldn't cooperate with the investigator in time of matter. I read the email the night before, he wanted me down with the police station at 8:00 in the morning. And I got tired of the烦扰. The second time, I explained that I saw nothing going on with Mr. Heckey that the average person couldn't swallow, you know what I mean? People tend to be kind of dense skin, and that's kind of ridiculous. And I said, "You're wasting my time, I'm wasting yours." The other hand, the deal with the police chief. Now, Mr. Heckey's been accused of this. I was with him, so why am I not? I'm named, but I'm not accused. Kind of looks at me like a ticker on a one-foot pond. I don't think you need to do that. Sure, Ken's rough. He's rough all the time. That's the nation when he first got on. And actually, he's a pretty much. My God, I've taken more from people up here in the last 20 years than, matter of fact, from people up there. I've sat in the audience being called a thief and a liar. Do you remember, if you'll tell me, and, Al? If you work for the city, you're just gonna have to tape it once in a while. Jeez, don't be such a selfless folk.
Michael Bigley, Sand Canyon, Tehachapi. I would like to ask the attorney that has presented this. When Councilman Heckey is sitting behind that podium out there, he's paid $100, $150 a meeting. He is a councilman. But he's not behind that podium, he's a businessman. When he's at the airport, he has a business at the airport. He has the right as a private citizen to address somebody and go talk to them. He's not going over there and saying, "I'm Councilman Heckey, and I'm gonna have your head and have your job." So he has that right. So if I were a private citizen, and I went over there and I addressed that guy at the gate in a rough manner, would I be standing before you facing charges as a private citizen? No, I wouldn't. Heckey was a private citizen that day. All these other incidents, he's a private citizen unless he's sitting back at the podium here. So I think that not just the charges that are unfounded that this attorney decided to air in public, which I think is wrong. I think the rest of the charges are unfounded too. And if you do take a vote for censure, I would ask that Mayor Liggins recuse herself since she is one of the complainants. Thank you.
Could you please explain quickly why we're doing this in public?
Well, you've been asked to take public testimony by the people out there. And it's up to you, Madam Mayor, if you wish to terminate it or restrict it. I don't recommend that.
No.
But that's up to you.
I thought the report had to be given in public session.
Oh, no, no. First of all, councilmembers wanted to know about that. And secondly, the employees were entitled to hear what the findings were and what are their complaints. And so there's absolutely nothing wrong with it. A public official is a public official, and whatever is said about them, transparency is generally made evident. So this is very, very simple and very common.
Honorable counsel, Barb Reynolds, Tehachapi resident, 47 years, American Law Association Law Instructor, 30 years, and apparently go for two U.S. Presidential Law Birds, 47 years. I was concerned about the presentation of counsel that quite frankly, on my 47 years, it looked like a trial. And in position, as Mr. Heckey, of course, was not represented by counsel, so you probably are quite astute to choose a lesser of the imputations of some type of punishment toward the counsel in order to avoid the issue of whether or not a trial actually occurred here. And Mr. Heckey was not represented. Prior to, you're taking his either life, liberty, or his property. Because it equates to a taking, and a lawful taking otherwise, without the due process, I don't think Mr. Heckey had any idea that he would be tried tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, P. Grab City. First question here is actually for the attorney. What was the timeframe of this? When did it occur and when did the investigation conclude? Can you answer those afterwards?
Jesse, do you want to take any questions at all? That's up to you.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions.
Okay. While I'm speaking or afterwards?
How do you want to handle that?
Yeah, we'll have to talk to your boss. When did it initiate or your complaint?
Yeah, I'll answer the questions now rather than after because I'm sure that other people have many of the same questions. The complaint that had to be investigated came in April of 2018. The investigation was initiated shortly after that. It occurred through January, and then the last two that went to be interviewed were Councilmember Heckey and Councilmember Walstrom. They did not participate in the investigation until the investigator wrote the report. The final report was issued November 6th of 2018.
Now, this was a singular complaint in April or was this a collective complaint?
There were multiple complaints.
This all originated in April?
The complaint led us to the investigation.
A singular complaint. And then you worked yourself up with the...
I'm trying to figure out how many, but we don't have time. You've got three minutes.
Okay.
We don't have time for you to...
Okay, well, then I'll go down here real quick, sir. What was the cost of this investigation?
I don't have that.
Why would you not bring that with you?
It wasn't part of my presentation.
And for the city manager, if I may, Greg. What are the requirements to start an investigation for something like this?
Mr. Maddox, explain that we're required by law to initiate a complaint.
Okay, so it's just basically the complaint is...
Absolutely.
Okay. On December 5th, 2017, I made a complaint to you referencing the administration of the Police Department, and I have yet to hear from you on that. This seemed to be pretty quick, considering it took place with Councilman Heckey. I want to know why my complaint was never addressed.
That has nothing to do with what we're talking about, right?
Kind of does, because it seemed like a hunt. It's like you're hunting down...
I'm sorry, but you need to stick to the subject. That's not part of what we're doing tonight. And if you're finished, I need to have you sit down.
I'm not finished, because we go back to the ball stats that we were talking about when Councilman Heckey spoke to Kroger. And if you drive down a boulevard right now, you can see there's a police briefing billboard that says, "We're the state of the city in Kern County." I'm watching 23 News the other night, our crime is up 23%. So I think with simple little analogies like that, it gives you the right to kind of question things. But I know what he was actually asking over there. He was asking about an active shooter.
You're almost out of time, you have five seconds.
Stop interrupting me, bitch. He was asking about an active shooter, and he wanted to know what your plan was, if in fact that took place. And why couldn't you answer that to a snappier citizen, a businessman, but your councilperson? And there was no thread of corn, by the way.
Your time is up.
Your time is up, I'm sorry.
So no answers, that's what I said.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Marlowe, I live here in the city. It seems to me that some of these allegations were pledged against Mr. Heckey before he was even a councilmember. So that seems to me to be unfounded. And the fact that that was brought up, I think is malicious. You're accusing him of bullying. I think you all are bullies. I don't think your end goal is here, right now, you're looking very hateful and very damaging to the city and to people at the level others who want to be here. You should be very careful of your reputation. But I find what you're doing to Mr. Heckey to be absolutely ridiculous, hateful, and substantiated. And I'd like to know how much can you spend on private investigators and the attorneys? How much did this cost the city? And why can't we move forward and lay the hate down and the ramifications of revenge that you guys are presenting? Why can't we lay that down and move forward? He won the election. He has a rough demeanor, sometimes sort of like. Get over it. I'm for him, I'm not for you. Because this man speaks for me and I like what he does and what he says. Thank you.
Susan Horster, Zeta Tehachapi, 19 years. That lady basically said what I wanted to say. But there's a couple of other things. You know, it is time to put the ugly aside. This did start in 2016. And one of those people that is accusing Mr. Heckey of not being arrested in the city when he filed for election was also harassed. And that was me, by the employee, taking a picture of my license, throwing it through DMV. Who has the power to do that? When I call city police, oh, well, you can just find it online. And then I find shit... Pardon me, I do apologize. I am very, I am anxious. Find myself on Facebook accusing me being accused and my husband of living where Mr. Heckey was arrested. My husband was dead. I forgot to change the registration on my registration from my license plate. Who did that? Why did that? I know, and you all know, who took that picture and who was with that person. We all know. At least, I don't use the name. This is a witch hunt. It has been... Why, I have no idea either. This has been a witch hunt from day one. It has been a witch hunt. He's the only councilmember that, of the few council meetings I've been here, that actually represents the citizens that ask him questions. And you council look at him as if he's the problem. He's bringing our issues to the council. Not his issues, our issues. And Lord, we got over the two new people. We welcomed you. I hope you do the right thing. The damage is done. All of this is public. I've been in a situation like this where my husband was slandered by a 13-year-old girl, plus six other employees. Neither one of those people were guilty of anything except a 12-year-old girl that needed attention. The damage was done, and you've done the damage tonight. And I hope you're damn well proud of yourself. Every single one of you.
I'm Paul Schutz of Lynn Rosman. I have handled your work. I've known Mr. Heckey, been with him 15 years. And I've worked in aerospace for 30 years, and I wish I had him defending me all the time in aerospace, because I've been a rich guy. Can you also work your magic with all this stuff with my wife? What I'm getting at, guys, is in the real world, in aerospace, we want to hire a guy like that who's dynamic, going like this. When I go into meetings, you've got to be push, go. I've got to tell him to do his job. That's what I do as a manager, and that's what's done to me. When I go in for my yearly reviews, you're right, I'm always worried about my job. I can be fired like this. So get with it, guys. That's one problem. People work at the city, they got a job for life. We work in aerospace, I can be gone an hour. I watch people walk in the street, walk in, pick you up, out you went, you're laid off, right, then fired. So that's what we have to deal with in the real world. If I'm hiring something like this, I want Heckey out there as a manager. He's got to push and go, and that's what we need. This city needs to get off its butt and get people. I've watched the city employees out at the airport. They're not going to get a speaking ticket from him. I see two people in a truck, I'm going, "Wait a minute, what can be down there? They're going to pick up the money for homeless hikers." I got two people picking up money, $20, and two people, it takes them an hour, it's a $2 bill. I don't see the dynamics, I don't see the push that I see in the aerospace industry. I don't think they'd be fired. So that's what I'm getting at, guys. It's a rough world. It's not nice, it's not all pretty. But in the real world, we're always worried about our jobs. Like, "I have a job tomorrow." That's the real thing. That's what we strive and work hard. Yes, I hit managers like him, and, "Oh my God, you don't want to see my wife." My wife is mean, my wife also has managed four V2s and $3 billion apiece. You want to see somebody when she gets mad, gets moving, kicks butt, makes him look like a lamb. So that's it, guys. The real world is out there. It is mean, it is nasty. "Your wife, we can't do that, say some stuff." "My wife got told not to go." She couldn't go on a trip, because who's going to stay home and take her husband in front of 50 people? But we're changed, we're better. We don't have to play what counters anymore. But Mr. Heckey is what you want. You want somebody out there. I hire him. He's dynamic, out there pushing us.
You're almost out of time, sir.
Great, thank you, but that's it. In the real world, guys, most of this wouldn't happen. He'd be applauded for it. Thank you.
Michael Puffer, Tehachapi resident, 13 years, not that it matters. Thank you for doing your job. What I heard tonight by this man, who is a paid professional, was you had a complaint, and you have to follow up on it. You did your job. What disappoints me is that half the community is against you guys doing what is mandated by the law. And without laws, this country will not stay. Great, and thank you.
Are there any more comments from the audience regarding the subject?
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes, as a part of the audience conversation. Bachelor of our city employee. If you haven't already figured out, I'm one of the employees who submitted a written complaint against Mr. Heckey. As I grew nearer, knowing that it would be obvious that I was one of the complainants, I began to get anxious, worrying about what people might think. And, you know, why is that? So many people don't report harassment because of the fear of retaliation, the fear you won't be believed, or the fear that you will receive blame. Or in our case, the fear of coming to a council meeting and having people stand behind that bully, condoning his actions. It takes courage to call out a bully, and that's what I did, as did many other staff members who experienced it firsthand. My claims were founded, as were many others, and I'm told to get over it. I hope the council will take the appropriate action and stop this type of behavior now and in the future.
I'm not in Ashley's shoes, but I'm here to ask us to put ourselves in Ashley's shoes.
I'm not in Ashley Shoes, but I'm here to ask us to put ourselves in Ashley Shoes. One of the things that goes rampant on our campuses and our schools is bullying. And I work as a substitute in those schools, and I see this every day. And what breaks my heart is the ones being bullied get to that point where they think their voice isn't gonna be heard. And if you're aware, some of that leads in our younger people to suicide. I know that's pretty drastic, but that's the reality of it. So tonight, I just want us to all pause for a few seconds and just think, and I know, I'm not picking sides, what I'm asking us to do is, for open, healthy conversation and living in the community together, we have to be willing to hear each other. And I feel like tonight, there's a lot of yelling and pointing fingers, but we're not really hearing each other. Ma'am, can I please get your ass concerned? Can I call Haley and your area president?
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, and this is a report, no action, right?
That's my recommendation, no action tonight.
All right. It means it was not placed on the agenda tonight for action to be taken. It's just a report at this point. All right. Number seven, Mr. Hecky, what was it that you wanted to ask about that?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let me get to my check register. I noticed that we have an expenditure, an expenditure in the city tonight for roughly $7,192 for the installation of security cameras. And I would like to know what is, what is the expected result of the $7,192 expenditure for installing the new cameras around town? And I don't know, I know where a couple of the cameras are, they were security cameras that were put at the airport gates, but the other cameras, I'm not sure where those ended up, and what the intended purpose of, were they traffic cameras? I just don't know the answer to the question.
Oh, not, not traffic cameras. So we have cameras in various areas of the city, for security purposes, we don't necessarily talk about them, for obvious reasons. But the depot that hanged the airport gate, we added some new cameras. But the cameras that have been installed for many years have basically died until these are replaced. And I think the only two new cameras are the airport gate, is that right?
Uh, the airport gate, West Water Gate, and PD parking lot.
Right, West Water Gate, so that we can see that somebody rings the buzzer, who are you, what's going on, we can buzz you in, so we keep safety in mind. What was the treatment of the other?
Uh, new PD parking lot.
New PD parking lot?
The airport gate. So all of those require cable lines, and they were new cameras, and otherwise you can see on there, there were replacement cameras, pretty old cameras that were quite a few years old and no longer working on condition.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, and the next question I have is for Mr. Schroeder. Uh, there's a charge here for Richards, Watson, and Gershon for legal services for $20,313. Can you let us know what that expenditure was for?
It was over several months. And it dealt with several things. Some of them were conflicts of interest issues. One of them was yours. I think I showed you the, the letter that they, that they wrote. And, trying to think what that, some of it had, some of it had to do with the marijuana legislation that was just recently adopted.
Okay, so this was accumulation of several months' worth of legal, outside legal work, not just a month's sum for one individual, uh...
No.
Okay, all right, great.
Yeah, there was another legislation outside of my fingers.
That's fine, Mr. Schroeder, as long as it was not singular in as far as one charge, if it was cumulative on what we've done over the last couple of months. Thank you very much. And I have no other questions on the item number seven, Madam Mayor. And I'll make a, I'll make a motion to, thank you. I'll make a motion to proceed as staff suggested and recommend that we approve the check register as per that.
Second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Uh, number 12, Mr. Hecky, your question.
Ray.
Oh, I didn't write down eight, I'm sorry.
Oh, wait.
Oh, yeah, I'm very sorry.
Madam Mayor, I need to reduce myself because I'm with the bar, I have a trial. Madam Mayor, before you leave, Mr. Davies, could I ask Mr. Schroeder a question? Having received some additional information from the FPPC regarding my situation, is it a necessity of Mr. Davies to actually leave the room, or can he just leave the area up here that represents the council and take a position in the audience while this occurs? And that as an individual member of the public?
I would not recommend that he do that. I don't recommend that you do it. You didn't get advice from him, so you got a phone call from him.
I got a letter from the FPPC.
No, you got an email based on a phone call, and it said specifically on the email, and I don't rely on this.
Well, but they all say that a lot.
No, not a formal advice letter, not a well-advised letter.
Well, the question, I, to your question.
No, I would not recommend that Mr. Davies do not leave the room. I would recommend that he leave the room.
Okay. Yeah, I just think, you know, for a situation like this, where we've got RSI that we've had as offender for years and years and years and years, for him to go through this big ceremonious program of walking down the hall for, you know, 13 seconds before somebody grabs him and brings him back in, you know, it just seems to be a little bit over the top when I read and have read what the FPPC said to me regarding certain matters similar to him. And I'm not here to argue legal points with you, but I see that, I just don't want to see Mike have to get up and run down the hall.
Well, I take that up with the legislature.
All right, thank you. Point taken.
Number eight.
He's got it.
I know, I'm waiting until, waiting on the notice that he has to walk out.
And the minister replied that he has conflict.
Yes. All right, disbursements and bills for RSI Petroleum?
Move approval on number eight.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Okay, um, number nine, public hearing, finance director.
So, on our mayor, we're against council members, and I'm finance director. The item before you is public hearing and proposed resolution dealing with transit needs within the city. We have done this every year, and we will be doing it as long, every year as long as we are in acceptance of PDA funding. So as you're aware, so you have to provide the dial-up ride and transit service. There have been no changes to the transit service or the fare from the last year. So basically, it's the same system that we are, we have been operating. In 2017, 18 fiscal year, the operational cost, however, progressively was reduced from $48 for prior year to $41 due to 137 increase in ridership. The continuing from the last year, city's general fund subsidized $21,600 again this fiscal year 2017 and 18, in order to meet the required 100, I mean, 10% fare box ratio. The fare box ratio is calculated using welfare collective during the year divided by the total expense. So the city is required to adopt a resolution annually, providing that there are no areas of the city with unmet public transit needs, which could be reasonably met by expansion of the existing system or establishment of a new system. So staff recommends council adopt the resolution finding that there are no unmet transit needs that are reasonable to meet within the city.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the audience regarding this? Council?
You got a mayor key to open?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I need to be retired. I'd like to open the public hearing, are there any comments from the audience? Do we have any written comments?
There's no correspondence.
Thank you. Close the hearing. Council, comments?
Well, since the new parking ride went in, my wife has been using it daily, and she made a comment today, it was probably the most packed it's been. And she saw a lot of riders get out of cars and get on the bus. So I think it's working very well for us. That's my comment. I'd like to make a motion that we, sorry, yeah, just one, one point, Mike. Uh, thank you. If the citizens in the public don't understand this, the city of Tehachapi subsidizes the part, the, the ride share program, the little Kern County Transit buses that we have, we subsidize that as a community. It is a very useful service for a very significant portion of our population. It's important, because what it does is it allows people that are homebound, people that may have medical conditions, to be able to call up, to, to get a ride, to a doctor's appointment or otherwise. It's very important that that service be provided to our community, but it is subsidized. And I think it's important, I don't know if you folks had a chance to look at what it costs from a subsidy perspective, and I don't know if Ms. Chung was going to cover this or not, but let me just, let me just throw this out for just some numbers that you have an idea of how much we put into this program. The total cost per rider for the 2017, 2018 period of time, and this is on a matrix, I don't know if we, do we have that matrix? Have a chance? You got it up there?
Some more.
Nevertheless, it's $41 every time somebody rides that bus. And $41 is, you know, a couple $20 bills, and that, we feel that in our wallet, at least I do. We get into the fare box a very, very small portion, and in a lot of cases, that's all the people can afford, that's all they can pay for it. But we, as a community, have stepped up, and we have provided that additional assistance for the folks that need to have that service made available to them. And I, I've supported this program in the past, I continue to support this program going into the future. The one thing that I would like to see, because of the way this legislation is written, we have, if we meet the requirements for the 10% match to the fare box, we in essence subsidize $21,600 to meet that 10% requirement. By meeting that requirement, we in essence get a half a million dollars that comes back to the city that can be used for the transit program and/or road funds. Well, I know you folks drive around town like I do, and let me tell you what, there are some big, deep, ugly potholes that we have. And, you know, with the freezing cycles, the rain, the snow that we get, they get deeper, they get bigger, it gets more, it turns into more of a mess. What I would like to see, and I would like to amend the resolution for tonight, I would like to see a line item broken out in our matrix for all following years that shows how much money we've received, sorry, how much money, I mean, we're planning to get a half a million dollars, how much money out of that half million dollars is actually being applied to the streets and the roads? Because there's two portions, one is the transit side, and the other part of that money can be used for streets and roads, if I understand that legislation correctly. And Jay, maybe, maybe you can input on that? What I'm looking for is a line item, though, in the future that says, we use X number of dollars for the transit buses, but then we use the remainder of that for repairing our streets and roads. Do you know?
Yeah, I think it's all of it. I think that the transit piece is taken out before that $500,000 number is used, and all of the remaining $500...
Okay, so there are, yeah, you're, you're, councilman, you're absolutely correct. There are two parts of the money from the transit. SDAF, which is, that is 100% dedicated to the transit. However, that money is not enough to pay for the transit, so we use some of the road money, that's also PDA. And so, the, after, SDAF is used first, and then whatever the balance that is short, we use LTF, and then whatever the leftover goes to street and road. In general, it goes about $252,000 a year.
Okay. So could we, going forward with, with an amendment? And I...
I can incorporate it in a chart and I'll make it a little bigger.
Fantastic.
Not in the resolution, but I will do this.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, Hannah, for doing that, and, Madam Mayor, I have no other questions.
Anyone else on the council?
Just a comment, if we can get the ridership up, it offsets the amount that we have to subsidize. So if we have friends and relatives that are not sure of the service, a lady called the house, and she was not sure of the service, and we let her know how it works and everything, and she had two people extra besides herself start using it, which just every little bit helps, the ridership goes up, the amount we have to subsidize goes down, and with that, we get, we don't have to take it from the roadside of it, we get more road repair out of the deal, otherwise, when the ridership's low, it comes out of that fund. So, I agree with that. All right, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion, we approve staff's recommendation.
Second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the annual public transit claim for transportation development act fund. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Midyear budget adjustments?
Again, the mayor begins and council members, the item before you is 2018-19 midyear budget adjustments. So as you can see from the table on the screen, we are anticipating $361,688 reduction in fund downs after the midyear budget adjustment compared to the original budget. And I will eventually go over the variance for each fund. And so, other than $361,000 reduction in fund downs, we're looking at $32,000 fund downs increase in LLD and EVAD. LLD is landscape lighting industry, and EVAD is a drainage basin assessment district. So, can you move it to... So I will start with the general fund. And if I go too fast, please let me know, because I will talk about many, many numbers. So in 2018-19 midyear, we are looking at property tax increase $29,000, motor vehicle license tax $61,000, and the plan check, planning application fee, increase of $70,000, and yet $39,000 reduction in improvement. So in this year, we are reducing $110,000 from the revenue on landscape and construction service cross charge to the other fund. And we're looking at $20,000 in misalience reduction, and increase of $73,000 of interest income. And one more, I am gonna move on to the expenditure side on general fund, which is the second white call on the screen. And we're looking at personnel cost $144,000 reduction, and increase of police vehicle $47,797. This is not exactly an increase, yet this is more of an incumbents, I mean, incurred amount from the prior year, the vehicle purchase. And then computer maintenance, we are increasing $25,000, and we, we added $136,000, $137,000 for the airport's loan write-off. At the end of 2017-18 year, airport fund has negative exact $136,690, and general fund is transferring to the airport fund as part of the write-off process. And we are transferring from $125,000 from general fund to fund 347 for PD parking lot. This amount is funded by the amount that we have financed previously. So in total, for general fund, we are looking at $157,666 reduction in fund downs. And we're gonna move on to the next, um, street gas tax and the street and road fund. street gas tax and the street and road fund. So in general, these are most of the timing of funding in and out. So the gas tax, street and road funds will have $78,402 reduction after the mid-year budget adjustment. And the capital project, unless any council members, whoever has questions, I'm not going to go into detail because these are mostly timing-related. Some of the adjustment on the revenue side is because we are anticipating the grants. When we did the original budget, we expected to receive such grants who are transferring. But depending on the progress of the projects that were not, we are postponing it to the next year or the different time. So only the item that I would like to mention is the facility impact fee. We have budgeted very low, but however, we are looking at $115,553 fee, the revenue increase. And the traffic and signal regional, the fee funds, we are looking at $611,000 increase on revenue side. And so overall, the aggregate of the capital project funds will have $447,212 reduction in fund balance. Since I went really quick, is there any questions on these? General fund, project fund, and the gas tax funds? Saying no, I want to move on to the next item.
Oh, never mind, he's going to ask later.
Further, yes.
And water fund, we are looking at $432,000 increase in the water right mitigation fee. And the retail water sales, we are looking at $150,000 increase from the original budget. So I just wanted to remind you one more time, these numbers are not replacing the original budget amount. These are the difference. So if you see on the revenue side, which is green column, if you see positive numbers, it's an increase. And if you see anything in the bracket, those are reduction. So I'm going to move on to the next. I think this was a failure of the well, and so we are budgeting $100,000 for the repair. And we brought additional $221,000 for water main work. So in water fund overall, we are looking at $273,362 fund balance increase. In sewer funds, it's not mostly minor. In sewer funds, the ending, the change will be $54,373,000 increase to the fund balance. And refills, we're looking at $4,000 increase. Transit, we are looking at fund balance reduction of $83,186. And when we do the for transit fund, we always make it a break even. However, we have recognized additional fund balance value in, at the end of 2017-18. So they are for, I mean, the whole of the funds, so we are increasing the revenue. I mean, reducing, we are adding more money to the revenue, so. And then I am going to move on to the airport fund. In airport, we are looking at $26,000 reduction in lease. And as you saw, we are looking at $134,800. We've been transferred exactly amount from the general fund to the airport as a write-off process. So overall, revenue of the airport fund, we are looking at $73,320 of fund balance increase. So that make it $361,688 reduction in overall fund balance. There are any questions that we have to answer?
Hannah, I just have a couple of questions regarding some fund references.
Yeah.
Fund number 310, do you know off the top of your head what that number is?
It was 310 and 348. And the only reason I asked...
348 is PD parking lots.
Oh, it is, okay.
I can answer.
Yes.
310 is the RCP project from a year ago in which we slowly sealed it over the streets. So those fund numbers in the 300 are capital project fund numbers that Hannah sets up and that mine and park and uses in the construction of capital projects.
Okay. And we're okay, because this is referring to a transfer out of those funds? Is that just as a function of paying the contractors for actually doing the work? Or what, how does...
No, a transfer is just moving money from one fund internal to the city to another. So when I budget for a project, at each stage of the project, from the very beginning, when we get the grant, I produce a budget, and we figure out all the places we're going to put money into it and how much money we think is going to go out of it. And then at each stage as the project progresses, I'm refining that budget and we're adjusting. So this is the end of the project, and the money we had put into the fund, we had $26,000 more than we needed in that fund. We delivered the project under budget. And now that it's closed, we can now move that $26,000 out to fund something else. So this is just closed.
Chair, if I may interrupt. That's the fund, the managing fund was paid, too. So we're putting back to the original funds.
Yeah.
The fund was transferred from.
Okay.
To the project. So only, so to make your understanding very easy, the reason we create all these new separate funds for this project fund is because we track each all separately for each capital project.
Okay. So we're at the conclusion of all of these, 310 and 348? There were surplus?
No, 310, we're at the conclusion, and 348, we're right at the beginning.
Oh, got you, okay.
And so I'm moving money into a fund in preparation for a project.
All right, thank you, Jay, and thank you, Hannah, on that. And I don't have anything more, I'm Matt Mayor.
Thank you. Was that the end of your report?
Yeah, that'll be...
Thank you. I wanted to make sure, I don't want to cut you off.
No, you do it.
All right. Are there any questions from the audience? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the mid-year budget adjustment reports.
It's removed?
I'll say it.
It's removed and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 5-0 vote. Thank you, Hannah. Now, Mr. Hentke, number 12, what question do you have about that?
Thank you, Matt Mayor. In regards to our investment policies, let's see, this is page four of that agenda item. And this is under paragraph five of the delegation of authority. And it's the last sentence in paragraph five. "Under the provisions of California Government Code, Section 53, 600.3, the persons authorized to make investment decisions on behalf of the City of Teahatchee are trustees and fiduciaries subject to the prudent investor standard." And I think it's, well, Hannah, it may be a question for you or it may be a question for Mr. Schroeder. Who is defined as a trustee or a fiduciary when it comes to the investments that we make internally?
Show me where those words are.
It's on page, it was page four of the agenda, paragraph five. And it was the, it's the big paragraph in the middle, the last sentence.
Well, first I want to ask Hannah, she's one of the policy.
So this is the word from State of California Code. And for the city, I do the trustee. When we have investment, we always have the third party. I think that's what they are putting you as trustee. So money, I don't directly buy any securities or anything other than the same use of constitutionally. And let's say if I were to go out to purchase, so we do have trustee bank, Bank of New York, or we do have before the Morgan Stanley. So those are the money that are transferred to the bank. That money, the purchasing done from there. So I don't directly buy it. That is for the security of...
That's the trustee part of it?
Yes.
The fiduciaries?
Oh, I would say that's part of the, you know, honestly.
That's part of it also.
I think that language is simply...
It's just... It's just...
Talking about trustees we have here or fiduciaries we have here.
Okay.
The people who are authorized to sign half the act like trustees or fiduciaries.
Okay, for third-party transactions. Is that correct, for third-party transactions?
That was my understanding.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, no more questions, Hannah, and thanks, Mr. Schroeder. And I don't have anything further, Matt Mayor.
Would you like to...
Sure, I'll make a motion that's recommended by staff that we approve agenda item number 12, this person.
You have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was 5-0. Airport managers' report, number 13, Mr. Hentke, you have a question?
Yeah. Sorry, yes, I do, I'm Matt Mayor. In regards to the new lease agreement that we are now using, and this may be more of a question to Mr. Schroeder than it is to this one. We have before us tonight the matter of the hangar inspection policy. Are we going to incorporate that hangar inspection policy language into our boilerplate lease agreement? So that becomes entirely... Because under section 17 of our standard lease agreement, as you're probably familiar, Mr. Schroeder, I think you actually wrote it in, yeah?
Sort of. We're a county, and I may have heard it over a few years.
So we've got section 17 that talks about the right of inspection. And then we've got a completely separate inspection policy. So it seems like we've got, we should probably try to incorporate all this together if we're going to incorporate any of it. That way we simplify the process and we're only working for one document.
Well, I think that if you adopt the hangar use policies tonight, I think that's probably what we'll look at. I'll have to talk with Ashley and the city managers, but that sounds reasonable.
Okay. Thank you, that was just a question and a point that I had. And I have no other questions on that. So we could proceed. I recommend that we proceed with the item number 13, as presented by staff.
You have a second?
Second.
It's removed and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was 5-0. And sir, you asked for number 14 to be removed?
Yes, ma'am.
Can I have you state your name and area of residence?
My name is Scott Baker, I live in, over in Bright Valley. And I'm a hangar employee for the airport. I've already moved the item, the items I want to say here. It will take me about 30 minutes to say it. I have a copy I'd like to have submitted into record, and I have five copies of the council member's form.
Okay.
There's six copies, sir. In 1991, the State Water Board order 91154 was adopted due to unauthorized sewer treatment plant discharges to Teahatchee Creek to mitigate the city encumbered 140 acres of airport property spread between sewer owner. The city was in possession of federal grant monies and government grant insurance compliance. The city failed to seek FAA approval for those ponds. Furthermore, FAA Section 5190.6b, ADOs made consent to approval for those ponds. ADOs made consent to interim use, maximum five years for non-aviation purposes. The five years is old 25 years ago. Airport property strided in the MOU and encumbered since 1991 and generated no rents until 2006. When the sewer fund began contributing unsolicited payments to 30K annually. In 2015-16, the Vodacross Enterprise Fund was set up in anticipation of separating 85 acres of airport property. Sewer fund contributions would have been diverted to the Vodacross Fund or eliminated. After land use hot by the FAA in May of 2017, the airport property separation project collapsed. The FAA identified several non-aeronautical activities that may not have been charged fair market value rates, sewer ponds included. In response, the city engaged Merriam-Heirst to appraise 81 acres of airport property. The property was on M1 level ground along a major transportation corridor. The recommended annual lease value for non-aeronautical used property is $200 an acre, which equates to .00038 cents a square foot per month for the 62 acres, $12,400 a year. And $15 an acre at .000029 cents per square foot for the 19 acres of M1 property, or $285 a year. Aeronautical users will pay at least 144 times the rate of the sewer plant for the 62 acres and 1,917 times the rate for the 19 acres. This is clearly inconsistent with FAA FMV guidelines, tying a valuable aeronautical land class to community as a significant property tax, since the city pays no annual tax on that property. Taking a 1% monthly lease charge against a $21,176 per acre appraisal by the Valbridge Company in 2016, the monthly lease rate for 81 acres would be about $211 a month. That equates to less than one-half cent per square foot a month, more than five times less than the aeronautical user's pay. Routine allegations that the airport users don't pay enough for the services they receive, that's why the airport is always in the red, are unfounded. An enterprise fund should stand on its own. Your budget is reflected, your budget reflects anticipated losses over $150,000 year after year without corrective action by the staff or this council. By adopting this MOU, it becomes clear why this airport is in the red, the staff put it there. In January 2017, your finance director identified airport noncash losses as a result of depreciation, as a quote, "as it always is," near $100,000. That's how you accumulated $1.4 million in debt between 2001, 2016, and tried to peddle that debt in a self-serving manner. Aeronautical users are not in control of managing the airport or its finances. Adoption of this MOU demonstrates why this airport will continue in the red and flies in the face of the FAA, who's trying to correct it by recommending a review of fair market value rates for retention pond groundings. Thank you.
Well, if you'd like, first off, I want to make sure you understand that this was, the amount was previously approved in the 2018-2019. All this does is clean up the documentation as requested by the FAA. We've never, in the past, had an MOU. The airport, the city, we're all one in that thought process. But the FAA felt we needed that distinction, and they wanted the MOU. So right now, this is just cleaning up the paperwork.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Thank you, everybody. My name is Mike Werner. I'm a Bright Valley Springs resident. I've been airport groundling super 28 years. In August of last year, Mr. Marsh, the then-new public works director, and I met at the Hawaii Airport for an FAA airport improvement program seminar. At that time, Director Marsh stated to me that within three years, the city water treatment plant would be improved and upgraded to produce tertiary treated water. And then that tertiary water could be pumped up to the Blackbird Dam and percolate into groundwater. Subsequently, the 100 acres of percolation ponds on the airport would no longer be needed for disposal of undisinfected affluent, and that this would also improve the groundwater quality in our basin. I would also like to read an excerpt from the 2008 Oil Engineering Report to the city about whose proposed improvements to that plant, about those proposed improvements to the plant. This is on page 6, paragraph 4 of that report. It's used to be on the city website, it's no longer there. This is from Oil Engineering. "By switching to tertiary treated water, the city will no longer need to percolate secondary treated affluent as a disposal method, thereby benefiting local groundwater quality. Additionally, if the city were to utilize the tertiary treated water for activities other than growing livestock fodder crops, the city could reclaim as much as 100 acres of useful space on their municipal airport property for the development of the airport. There are currently plans for the development of this area of airport into a light industrial park." I believe from my reading of the report that two improvements needed, and Mr. Marsh raised a grant on this, are membrane, bioreactors, and a UV disinfection system. So here are the questions we would like answered here tonight. When can we expect those improvements? And that the north side of the airport can be reclaimed for aviation and light industrial and commercial development as shown in the city's own airport master plan? Also, the other question, with this implied improvement, why is this lease agreement in this memorandum stated for a term of 10 years? The FAA, according to the grant insurance rules, will not approve of such non-aerological use for more than a five-year interim period. We would believe that such a sunset clause has to be included in this proposed memorandum if the city is to conform to its own airport master plan and FAA grant assurances. So do we have an answer to those two questions? Would you like me to answer? I don't recall the specifics of that conversation.
I don't recall the specifics of that conversation, that detail. But we are working on a plan to eliminate the discharge of wastewater at the airport.
Could you explain to the audience what tertiary water is and what the, what the secondary affluent, affluent is being applied to the airport property is at that time?
Sure, under, I'll do the best I can. Um, under our permit with the state, we discharge secondary treated water. That means it goes through two forms of treatment at our wastewater treatment plant, and that gets discharged at the airport to grow crops, alfalfa, basically.
Are you growing alfalfa out there now?
We don't grow alfalfa during winter. We only do that during the summer when alfalfa grows. The...
Did you, did you harvest alfalfa from that field last year?
No, we don't.
Why?
We're not allowed to sell that, um, and use it for, uh, cow feed or anything like that.
Why is that?
Uh, Mr. Lerner, let's talk...
It's just a...
Let's talk a little bit better, because this is becoming a dialogue.
I'm asking a question.
And you're well beyond your three minutes. So let's just go through the share, if you have some specific question.
I, I've already given two specific questions.
Yeah, and you've got answers? So, so do you have anything?
No, I asked, when can we expect those improvements to the water treatment plant? That where we start putting out tertiary water that could be used, could be used for watering landscape and other non-podable uses, but since we don't have an infrastructure to take that water from the plant anywhere in the city, that's why Mr. Marsh said they were going to pipe it up to the Blackburn Dam and let it percolate to groundwater. Then it would go to groundwater, and then the wells in the area can pick up the cleaner water than, than what's being spread on the airport right now. Uh, and that's, and also the second question of whoever wrote it.
Did you want me to answer that question?
Uh, why do we, why are we asking for a ten-year lease agreement at these very low rates with the, and then being able to renew for another ten years?
No, I'm sorry.
Has the FAA said that this is not an interim use? That's the only thing I can think of. Have they told you you can do this for ten years?
Mr. Schroeder has an answer for you.
Well, about the, uh, the automatic renewal, that can stop. It's automatic only if all the parties want it to be automatic.
And somebody has already questioned the FAA about the ten years when it's a non-aeronautical use?
I did speak with the FAA on Thursday, because they had some, uh, notifications by the student tenants and everything. We spoke, he was, uh, fine with everything we were doing as far as the MOU. Um, we did discuss the fact, similar to what you were saying, with the, uh, change in use potentially, um, that would, it would end up being interim use, yes.
For five years then?
Well...
Or if, as Mr. Marsh says, we're going to improve the plant to tertiary water, would be your... I think that's going to happen for you, Mr. Marsh?
Can I weigh in here for a second?
Yes, please.
So we have enterprise funds. Those are standalone companies. Standalone wastewater company, we have standalone airport company, water, and so on and so forth. The city residents own all, every single one of them. And so when you sell water, we provide a service to treat wastewater. You can only charge what that costs, money in, money out. That's what that's all about. Years ago, the city attached, years ago, previous to all of this, so Mr. Smith, I believe, we had a problem with our wastewater treatment plant. We were forced by the state to make some very significant improvements to the way that we treated our wastewater at the plant, and where we ship it, and how it's managed. We have ponds at the wastewater treatment plant. We have some ponds on the north side of the airport. There is a very large strip of aeronautical used property, north of the runway. So if somebody came to the city attached to me and said, oh, the hangars, Boeing's moving to town, fill the lane, we're all about it, we're all about it. The revenue, we go right back into the airport enterprise fund. There's nobody that wants to improve the north side that we are aware of. We have agreed up with TMRA, attached to the Royal Association for the Rotary Grounds, and we charge the city's airport company charges the wastewater company thirty thousand dollars a year. That was an arbitrary one, as far as we can tell, that was pulled out of the air many, many years ago. When the FAA came to visit us a year and a half ago, there were several items that they looked at. This was one of them. And they said, you need to prove to us that the thirty thousand is a legitimate number. Gave it appraisal, did a side appraisal. We didn't have appraisal. So we engaged the appraisal world, went out to bid. One company came out with a bid. They have pretty farmland, that's what we're talking about, farmland. They came to us and said it's worth twelve five. We told the FAA, we have an absolute legal obligation to only pay, transfer from the wastewater plant enterprise fund to the airport enterprise fund, that amount of money. The twelve five was put in the budget that this body approved many months ago. The only thing we're talking about is an MOU, which is a memorandum of understanding, to make it legal, right? The FAA wants a document in place. As Mr. Schroeder pointed out, it can be changed, anything that we do. When you change municipal code, when you pass a resolution, this body has the ultimate flexibility in moving things around, right? We can change our minds. If somebody comes to us and says, I want to develop, we would be all about it. Prior, you know, contrary to certain people's belief, we are serious pro-aviation. We, we transfer every year a certain amount of money out of the general fund into the airport enterprise fund, so the airport is solvent. What we're doing tonight is reducing that. So the wastewater treatment plant is not going to pay for it, it's going to pay twelve five. Well, the general fund is going to have to pick up a little more of that, right? But we continue to, to push and to raise rates. We, not raise rates, we, uh, we're working with AT&T, Verizon, others, to be able to increase revenues to that company, right? We have a grant, so on and so forth. So it's a very straightforward process. Now, when we talk about IPR, it's an indirect potable reuse. That's a lot of money. We're working on that now. That's ten to twenty million dollars worth of improvements. What does that mean? That means we're going to treat the water to a higher level, and then install piping and different things. And we hope to be able to push that water to the Blackburn Dam, which is owned and controlled by Tash becoming Water District, with the water percolating to our groundwater, which already happens anyway, right? This is mother nature. And then we can regain those water rights for ourselves. So we come, so we become self-sufficient. That's a big benefit in the freshwater world. It's also a benefit because we can take the water from the wastewater treatment plant and completely irrigate the north side of the airport, and maybe some of the ponds at the public works facility, the wastewater treatment plant. But that means somebody's going to have to pay for that. Is it existing rate payers? Is it the new guy? Is it a hybrid? So we're working on this now. It's something that we will bring to you at some point. But I don't want anybody to, one, think we're not all about the airport. Two, to think that we're not working, actively working with very intelligent people on solving these problems, so we can retain our, our assets, the water, the freshwater, the treated wastewater, the airport in its functionality, and everything that we do. So tonight, we're just asking for an MOU. You don't have to pass it, if you don't want to pass it. The FAA has asked us to ask you to pass this MOU.
Thank you.
I just think that Mr. Derry is correct. He made a statement to the Tashbe News in two thousand and twelve when the plant was done. We are always looking into the future, and we are already looking into the future. He said, pointed out that upcoming goals could include increasing treatment all the way to tertiary level to continue to increase the uses of all city water. That would increase the city's ability to use treated water for sprinkler systems, to irrigate parks, landscape, instead of using valuable potable water sources. Toilet's tap, he said with a smile, but not that you'd want to drink it. Are there grants available for this?
There are lots of funding sources, right? There are grants, there are loans, there are charitable loans. As you recall, about five years ago, Hannah, Jay, and previous public works director, John Curry, did an amazing job, put together a design and a package, a financial package, that allowed the city to move forward to further enhance the way we treat our wastewater. We're not there yet. It's very complicated, a lot of players, a lot of politics, and a lot of money.
Thank you. Uh, hopefully we can get this on the agenda, we can talk some more about it.
I would just think you wouldn't want to try to put this memorandum through to the FAA if they only give you five years.
Well, they're not giving us anything, we're giving ourselves. We're just telling up, or we're asking the council. You control the wastewater plant, you control the airport. The FAA asked for an MOU, council.
Well, it's the same thing that happened to Motocross, right? He went whole hosting out to do it without getting FAA approval, so what happened there?
We never built it. We worked with the state, if you recall, if you know the facts.
I do.
Well, I know all the facts. We worked with the state of California Parks District, and we were able to obtain a million dollar grant. We never received the money, but they committed the money through many, many public meetings, and we worked with the FAA. But we decided, and we recommended to the city council, to abandon the project.
Did you sign a paper with the state of California Park address that this city had control over that land, without telling them that you had to get approval from the FAA first?
Oh, no, we've never.
You know, you came up here for one thing, I appreciate that. And I'm going to have to, to end the discussion, but we have a whole city staff who would be happy...
As I said, Madam, let's move, might bring this up another time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Let's move, might bring this up another time.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Number fifteen.
I'm sorry. Sorry, hi, David Van Gogh, president. I had a question about the appraisal. You said it was appraised as farmland. Why exactly wasn't it appraised for what it's zoned for? And why shouldn't the city be paying rent for what it's zoned for?
It has to be appraised for the use.
Not what it's owned for, huh? Regardless of what it's being used for, the zoning is not?
They will only appraise it for the use, and it was used as agricultural. Part of that was undeveloped, part of that's developed, as far as piping and so forth.
And who, whose decision was that, they or the bus, or the city?
That was, we went out for appraisal for the use of the land as it was being used.
Okay, so it's work a lot more than what it's being used for?
Yeah.
Because it's zoned light industrial?
I'm just saying, light industrial may have worked last season.
May I clarify something? So it's, it's all city money?
It's relevant, right?
Well, it's not irrelevant, it's relevant. Look, it's not like we are suggesting that we abandon the airport budget or the airport revenues. We're going to just reallocate, instead of the wastewater treatment plant paying thirty thousand, we'll pay twelve five. The other fifteen K will come from the general fund. We're not, we're not taking money away from the airport. It's not happening. The airport, every year, is, is funded at the, the appropriate level in every manner.
I have a question. I think there's some contention here as to the value of the land that the airport should get at the podium. You're contending that the airport should receive more from the wastewater treatment fund?
Absolutely.
Because you're saying that just because of zoning, it should be at a different rate than farmland? Okay, how do we get a resolution to that argument?
Resonance?
No, no.
I'd be, I'd be happy to answer that question.
Yes.
The appraiser determines what factors affect the appraisal. Anyone in here in business knows that to be the case. The FAA has grant assurances, or, or, I don't know if the grant assurances apply to this property, but the FAA regulates this land as airport land. Therefore, that regulation absolutely affects the value of the property. It may be zoned M one, but the FAA dramatically limits the things you're allowed to do. The list of things available to be used on M one and any property in the city does not apply to the airport. We can't put any of the uses listed on our M one table on that land just because it has the title M one. It has dramatic restrictions as a result of the airport, ones that Mr. Lerner pointed out, noting that any non-aviation lease, the FAA frowns on anything over a five-year lease. How many manufacturing businesses are interested in moving a manufacturing operation to the city on an M one piece of property with a five-year lease from the FAA, saying that at the end of that five years, the FAA can wave a magic wand and destroy their business?
That's correct.
You know, so an appraisal...
Didn't that work?
The appraiser determines what the, what factors affect the appraisal. Like, this is a qualified appraiser, and quite frankly, I find it amazing that we've got people who aren't appraisers, who are suggesting they know better than the appraiser, how to appraise the land. I, we're doing what the FAA asked. We're also doing the second step tonight of the MOU, which is what the FAA asked us to do. I, anyway, I, I think it's simple, I...
Who are you using as an appraiser?
Excuse me, if you have a comment, you need to come to the podium. And that question was already answered, but whoever yelled that out, you're welcome to come to the podium and ask that question.
Thank you, Madam. If you look on the airport rail map, which I usually have with me in the dome, this is in two thousand and thirteen, the areas of the fund you're talking about show light industrial, light commercial aviation use. That's what the FAA approved. That's what they would like to see in there. So when he says some manufacturer or somebody can't come in there, that's incorrect. I didn't...
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Paul Sheslaw. Um, for seven or eight years ago, I tried to lease the property there around the fairgrounds, Rotary Grounds, to run some cows in, to buy some calves and raise them up, sell them off as feeders. Um, the former, um, public works director talked to me quite a few times. The first year he sold them off, there were cows there, and they disappeared. The second year when I called up and finally got an answer from him about leasing it, was he said he could not lease it to me because the state of California had determined that the phosphate level was too high in the water, dumping on it. And he could not run cows because of the phosphate in the ground would come up in the alfalfa and hay, and I was not allowed to lease the property to run cows on. So I had to turn it in for that. So I'm wondering, in all this talk, and eventually one day you're going to, you're going to flush the toilet and drink it two days later. How are we going to clean up the problems that we've had over dumping the phosphates? We've dumped it all this time, how are we going to dress cleaning that property up?
We do not have a super fund, we're facing a site. We do not have a problem with anything. We are not disposing of anything that's not allowed. What we're doing is exactly what's prescribed and proved, and we're licensed by the state of California to do so. What we don't allow is for cattle to roam and eat the, the alfalfa that's being grown. That's also a state regulation. You cannot feed the cattle directly from a field that's used with sprinkled waste, treated wastewater. It's a state rule, it's not an order.
Okay, so we're really not, so we can't sell the alfalfa, we can't use the alfalfa. So you just have it as a round cover? Is that correct?
It's a use for the water, you grow the alfalfa, that's all it is.
It's, that's what our permit allows us.
It's ground covered?
It has nothing to do with ground cover.
Well, you could, you could grow anything else, and we could put pot in there. But, okay, so, um, so I'm not able to apply for a lease to, to run cows in? Thank you.
At this time, if the council doesn't have any other comments or questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this...
Madam Mayor, let me just say one word before we take that vote. As a council member, and having understood that the airport has operated in marginal financial condition over years, I would urge my fellow council members, as with any business, if we have, if a business has a problem with income, the CEO or the CFO says, fix it. If our airport continues to operate in the red, which has done for years, we need to, as a council, come together with a plan to fix that somehow or another. And we need to do that by aggressively going out and advertising for additional businesses, for light commercial, whatever we need to do. But this council, I think, is doing a disservice to the community by continuing to allow a negative, a negative, a negative, a negative regarding the airport, and subsidizing that with other funds from other areas, when we should, we should step up, put together a plan, and see if we can put that into place. So everything is, from, from some point on, in the black. That's crucial. We have to do it. A company would do it if they were looking at a division that was not making money, and I think as this, as this council says, we should do the same thing. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Interestingly, we have a plan to use the airport property for an event center to generate revenue for the airport. We've got so much flash, and Mr. Happy, you were kind of leading the charge against that, that part of it.
I think I should finish.
All right. When you're ready to finish.
If I might, I believe you were opposed to the use of that land for an event venue, which would generate, and we have a plan for building and the use of it, for rental of the property, and still allowing a lot of use adjacent to the airport north side for aviation purposes. I mean, it's been here for a long time, and we don't have folks, even with advertising, breaking the doors down, saying we want to build industry on the north side. If they do want to do that, we have room to do that on the north side right now. If you were to put an event center in there, you would generate revenue that would probably wipe out the annual debt of a hundred and thirty-some thousand every year. It would give other components of the community use of land, it's city property, taxpayers' property, for use, you know, for events and things that the rest of the community could use, at the same time allowing airport users what they use it for. So this, this idea that we wave a magic wand, we advertise in the paper, and we're gonna get aviation industry just running, you know, running at us to develop the north side, and it still hasn't happened since I've been on here, and it's available there for those people. And I would be happy to work with any of the folks at the airport if they've got an idea that I will go with them to those industries and say, let's, let's figure this out, we can give you a deal for aviation industry and generate revenue from the airport side on the north side. But I say, let's go ahead and develop the event center area, at least while we're waiting for the folks in aviation, as we've been waiting for them for a long time. Let's just work together and stop squabbling about this fund should pay that fund, we're not giving the right valuation of the land because you think it should be paid by the zoning, not by the use. These are arguments that don't make any money. They don't make a set, they just make arguments and talk. Talk is really cheap. I say, let's build as a community an event center that all of our citizens can use, and if it means we can still use the airport north side for aviation industry, let's do that too. But this, this business that it only has to be used for aviation on every piece of that property, that's a, that's a piece of property that all taxpayers own.
Amen.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, just for a clarification point, you will not find anybody involved at the airport who was completely opposed to the event center nor the motocross track, but the common thread was follow the rules.
Amen.
If you follow the rules and everybody's on board with it, we can proceed. But there were things that were done that were not following or abiding by the rules, and I know that firsthand. So I'm in agreement with you. If we can get to a point where we can abide by the rules, and we can put together an expansion of the rodeo grounds, and we can do something in that area, let's proceed with it.
This is their first area.
And let's turn that revenue to the airport. We don't have to make new enterprise funds for all these other different things to do, but the money at the airport where it belongs, because it is an airport first, it's not a rodeo grounds or an event center with an airport on it, it's an airport with a rodeo grounds or an event center on it. There's a big difference. I think you and I are in agreement.
I think we are too.
All right, well then, we all need to put our heads together and let's get something to happen.
Well, I think, yes. And this part is that's a big piece of property owned by all the taxpayers with a small portion of it used for the airport, and they're using it well. And we've, we've invested heavily in that airport, and I keep them getting pounded up here every year by folks that say we're not doing it right. So I think if we put our energy to doing something positive together, we could certainly have both. So if you're in agreement that we should move forward with the event center, I think that would be the highest priority, and if folks can get some folks in here that want to develop that north side, you know, we've, I've seen so many plans, buildings and hangars on the north side, people who want to have a hangar and have their airplane there and fly in and out of their home there, you know, let's do that as well. I'm all for all of it, so.
Well, there was an entire plan for that, mentioning the home hangar program. And, you know, the FAA has taken a very, very open approach to hangar homes now, or through the fence agreements or arrangements. And, you know, maybe that's something that should get revisited once again, because there's a lot of dollars and there's a lot of tax dollars in that.
And the, the airport commission, when we had one, was all in favor of the event center and everything we were doing out there. It was just, we said we weren't doing it correctly, and I think it, Paul, we were ready to go, and now we are forced to do an environmental study that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. Instead, if we could have just done it the way we're doing, we probably could have had a rodeo grounds with buildings and things being used right now. But that's behind this, let's go fully.
Okay. At this time, do I, no.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
We're moving on. Thank you.
I don't like to speak.
Three or four times, thank you, sir.
I need to...
Let the man speak.
I'll say, you already spoke. You already spoke on this issue.
I can say it for a problem. My name's Paul Lauder, I'm a resident of Bear Valley, I have a property over here in the city of Dashby. Can you promise us with the enterprise zone that everybody will go to the airport? Fun will stay in one fund only, and we don't make a whole bunch of other funds out of it? Just pour that money? It's the airport. If we have something on the airport, like your enterprise zone, and I'd be here fighting if you talk about the motocross track again, but I think that's long gone.
Yeah, they got next to it.
It's called IFR at the airport, you can't see anything when there's dirt flying. But can you promise that the enterprise fund will all go to the airport?
Absolutely. The airport makes in revenue goes into the airport enterprise fund, and every dollar that we spend on the airport is, is removed from the airport enterprise fund.
Okay, I think that is...
There's a lot of question, there's never been a question. We're audited every year. We have great people, honest people doing the right thing. We have never once used any penny of airport money outside of the airport.
I think the whole problem with the, when we wanted to put the enterprise area there in the motocross, of course, the motocross track is ridiculous. I think they were repiable at that, and so the type of dust is going to blow. And of course, they shut the one down in Lancaster, that was a disaster to the freeways. But going back to the enterprise zone that you wanted to develop, which I think is a good idea, you have to promise that that money will go to the airport fund. Like, everybody said here, all the pilots will probably agree with me, that it's an airport, it's not an enterprise, it's not a restaurant or banquet, it's like, it's an airport, like Mr. Happy said, and then it's an enterprise zone.
We're not talking about an enterprise zone. This is not an enterprise zone. It's a whole different legal aspect.
What do you call it?
Tax. This is an airport.
An event center.
No, an airport enterprise fund. It's like our wastewater, it's like our freshwater, it's like our transit, it's like our baggage.
Okay, so the event center would be part of the...
The event center is, is a project that we've been working on that is within the airport.
But would that event center proceeds go to the airport itself?
Yes.
These are bookkeeping terms. They're not, you know, when you set up funds in a public agency, school districts, cities, what, government, all of these things have been picked by the state ahead of time, and we are to call these funds enterprise funds, because they're standalone funds, which is completely different than any other enterprise thing.
Okay.
And whatever happens on the airport goes into the airport enterprise fund. It's a bookkeeping term, am I right, Hannah?
You are correct, yes.
Okay, so the event center, I think all the pilots and the hangar are...
I'm gonna have to interrupt. The event center is on the agenda. And we're getting in...
The funds, the funds going to the airport is...
You can ask about that, but let's just keep away from the event.
Now, I'll also ask once again, why is this a ten-year lease on the, a food property when the FPA allows five years? Because it's been asked so many times. It's the same reason why the event center disappeared, is because the FAA wasn't involved in it.
No, no, the FAA is heavily involved. As a matter of fact, the FAA requested that the city attached to create the AMOQ, right? Ashley and Mark, our airport management, has spoke with the FAA, responds with the FAA. If the council's not comfortable with the ten, make it a five, make it a one. We're only doing what the FAA requested that you do, that's all. The money is already changing hands. Your budget already reflects this, that you adopted eight months ago. This is just a mechanism so that we have a piece of paper for the files.
Thank you for explaining it to us.
Thank you.
Well, can somebody tell me what difference, not you?
Put this in the public. If the concern is with a five-year arrangement, because that aligns with what the FAA specifies in their policy, and we have the ability to extend that, then why don't we just make it a five-year? It aligns with the FAA policy, and we get down the road with this.
Well, it's not the FAA policy.
It's what actually is. A five-year non-aeronal use is, that is very well written.
We have many non-aeronal uses.
As I understand it, there are thirty years.
Again, this body can do whatever you want. You could do one year, five year, ten year, twenty year. It's your airport, right? Or you could do no AMOQ. I recommend that you even this a five-year.
Motion on staff's recommendation, let me hear you. I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, let the record show up as a mic drop vote. Number fifteen.
Uncle Mayor and council members, before you have the hangar use and inspection policy, over the past several years, there have been issues in airports throughout the country that have resulted in the FAA publishing a policy clarifying what is considered aeronautical use of hangars.
Excuse me, Ashlyn. Mr. Schroeder, I will recuse myself because of potential conflicts of interest that I have.
Well, let's just go through what the FPPC said to you.
Okay.
First thing you gotta do is publicly identify each type of financial interest.
Okay. I currently have multiple aircraft hangars that I lease. I currently run a business that rents airplanes. I am an FAA certified airplane mechanic and an IA. We do aircraft crash recovery, and we do a lot of things in between with the aviation industry as needed and as called for by various customers.
And we have a formal advice letter from the FPA. See that you have a conflict of interest and are not to vote or participate. Let me finish, let me finish on some of the things you have to deal with. The next thing, you're, you're looking for an exception to be able to go out in the audience and speak, and that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. But I want you to understand that you're overruling your formal advice letter through a little email that, that the FPP says you cannot rely on. This is not their, this is just a telephone conversation, you might say. Now, I'm saying this for your own benefit. I, I don't care if you go out there and speak. So the second thing you have to do is you now recuse yourself on the record and you leave the dais. Okay? Go ahead and...
Yes, and Mr. Schroeder, would it help if we read the entire memo that came from the FPPC?
No, you can get on the record if you want.
Okay, well, I mean, it's, it's crucial, because there was a, there was a phone conversation with an attorney in Sacramento. That attorney then consulted with other attorneys within...
His supervisor.
His supervisor, and they came back with this recommendation and suggestion that I use this mechanism to participate this in...
And they said you cannot rely on it.
Well, let me tell you...
This is something that will not affect you against the FPP coming after you, and that's fine. I don't care if they come after you. I just want to make sure that you follow the dictates that have been...
Okay, all right. So your next dictate, sorry, was?
Now you recuse yourself and leave the dais.
Okay, I will officially recuse myself and leave the position here, and I will assume a position in the audience.
And when you do, if you want to make a comment, you don't have to. You can sit there and listen if you want. If you want to make a comment, you can only speak about the impact of the decision on your business.
That is correct.
No one else's business for the airport in general.
Yep, okay.
All right. And Minister said that he recused himself and is leaving the dais.
And you will submit that into the record, right?
We have it already.
All right, we already have it, thank you. All right, go ahead, Ashlyn.
Okay, I will start over here. So over the past several years, there have been issues in airports throughout the country that have resulted in the FAA publishing a policy clarifying what is considered aeronautical use of hangars. The policy was published in June 2016 and went to effect July of 2017. Complying with FAA rules and regulations as well as local ordinance and license agreements is important for many reasons, including our ability to receive federal grants and further projects to maintain aircraft operating areas. These assurances required that the airport sponsor make the airport available for aviation use, including aviation services, and ensure that airport facilities are available to meet aviation demand at the airport. In May of 2017, the FAA conducted a land use inspection on the hatch at the airport. The inspection resulted in a letter, as we've spoken about, recommending the implementation of a hangar inspection program. This program will allow the city to ensure hangars are being used for aeronautical purposes and also comply with county and city fire safety and building codes. So we pulled from other general aviation policies for the hangar, for hangar use, and worked in coordination with the FAA. We put together a policy that ensures all hangars are banned. We also work with the FAA on ensuring that current aviation-related businesses at the airport that may not meet the FAA's standards for an aviation business. As an example for you, Sierra Technical Services, aviation business to all of us, right? According to the FAA's policy, it's not considered an aviation use. So we did work with them to be able to allow those to stay that were already there, and make them an aviation use according to our policy, and the FAA was okay with that, they were fine. So they would not be displaced. Tenants were all given the opportunity to comment on the policy in early 2018. General questions, a lot of this, comments are received back, but just general questions. So I, I'm ahead and... this, comments are received back, but just general questions. So I went ahead and attached a, or I put out a fact sheet just to answer those questions. And then there were a few changes made to the policy after receiving those comments from tenants. I also presented the policy to the Tachy Society Pilots General Meeting in early 2018. So the pilots have seen the policy. It's been on the website for quite a while. It's also been reviewed, made changes by the FAA, so they are aware and good to go with the policy. Also, it's approved by them. I've included not only the policy that we put together, I've included that fact sheet that I told you those questions were answered to. I've included the FAA policy. And, let's see, we've put in here the FAA's vote regarding how some of the hangars conflict. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I do want to reiterate what you said, that you have the FAA approval of this hangar inspection policy.
Yes.
Correct. They were very happy with the policy. Thank you very much. Comments from the audience concerning this?
Paul Shutsill-Rosen, I own a hangar 17 East. Yeah, number 44, sorry. My question is, is when they come to inspect my hangar, my insurance will not be covering them, my liability insurance, since they are employees and they be paid while they're there? Will you be providing a copy of the insurance to make sure that they have, that they're insured when they come on my property inside my hangar?
The airport is insured.
Will you be providing me a copy to make sure that...
You are more than, yes, you can come by City Hall anytime and ask for that document.
You'll be bringing that with you when you come to visit my hangar.
I have no problem bringing that document with me.
Thank you. The next question is, the policy, this will apply to all airport properties?
Yes, so hangars. So it's a hangar inspection policy.
What about, you said airport, what about the other leasing properties that we have outside of the gates and the city-owned hangars? Does this also apply to city-owned hangars being inspected?
So yes, city-owned hangars on the property. So we own seven hangars, so those will also be inspected. Five of those are actually rented out to tenants, so they will be inspected. Aside from that, outside of the airport property, so that's non-aviation use if you look at our ALP. So anything inside the fence, which is aviation use according to our ALP, that's what will be inspected. So they're not required to follow that, this policy if they are outside.
And this could be airport manager, a city inspector, a red riot, a building inspector, and fire department?
So, yes, it'll be myself, code enforcement, building inspector, and fire inspector.
Okay. One problem with building inspectors, my hangar was built when the county did the inspections. And recently, I haven't found out what's up. The county has no record of my hated hangars from 49 down ever being built. They have a record where I paid on the fee, but they don't have the inspection paperwork, and they don't have plans. So when your county inspectors come in and look at it like, oh, they won't have anything to go on that way. Also, too, one of our people, Mr. George Sandy, has several hangars, and he rents, he has renters of the Kern County Fire Department. Who will be inspecting the fire department's hangars?
Well, the fire department wouldn't inspect the hangar as far as that portion goes.
Maybe you have somebody who's qualified.
No, the fire department is the fire authority in Kern County. They are authorized to inspect themselves. I realize that you don't like the way that looks, but it's...
Okay, I'm just starting to talk to you.
Yeah, it's...
You're out of time, sir.
Okay. Yes, but I also had, this actually took some of my time, too.
Yeah.
The other question I had for you is, if a hangar does not have airplanes, like two of the hangars that the fire department uses do not have airplanes associated with them, are they under the, like Sierra Pacific is?
So, as you know, all hangars are required to follow the policy. That being said, I know for a fact that Mr. Sandy had prior approval with this lease to have the fire department in those hangars even the months without a plan. So that would, yes, that would fall along the lines of the aviation business that was already set in place.
Any other questions or comments? Counsel?
The fact that I'd like to applaud staff who work with the FAA, working with the tenants, aside age, what lack of comments we have, and then the good questions that we have, that there's not a big dispute on the policy itself, because everyone had ample time to take a look at it. So, and you incorporated all their comments from the...
I incorporated what was reasonably incorporated.
Sure.
Otherwise, like I said, the majority of the comments were a lot of questions, how are you going to do this, how are you going to do that? And so those I answered in the fact question, because many of the comments were the same, or the questions were the same. But I found a lot of the tenants, they also want the hangars to be used for aviation. So they're on board.
It's a good use of the aviation property. And if the FAA and the folks here, and the audience, and the hangar owners agree, then I'll make a motion to approve the policy on staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the inspection policy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. Number 16.
Honorable mayor, I will wait for Mr. to come up.
See, Tom, that wasn't that painful. You got another conflict. Wait over for the next one.
This is discussing rate structure.
Is that a rate?
You might want to do the second thing.
All right, I will.
State it, will you state it?
Oh, yeah, sure will.
Please.
I apologize for the interruption. Due to the fact that the next discussion is based on rates pertaining, new rates pertaining to new hangars, I will recuse myself for the following reasons that I previously prevented. I am an aircraft aviation hangar business owner at the airport, and I refuse myself from this discussion and will leave the area and go to the audience.
Honorable mayor and council members, the item before you is a hangar rental rate structure. As the council may be aware, the rental rates for new aeronautical ground leases and hangar rentals has remained stagnant while costs for current tenants have increased annually by consumer price index, or the CPI. What that means is that a tenant who has been with the airport for several years will be paying more per square foot than those that have come in with a new lease. So the staff would like to change this practice and increase the rental rate annually per this consumer price index. Sorry, let me get through here.
For each year.
The current base rate would also increase to a rate similar to those that are being paid by current tenants. So currently, if you own your own hangar, you privately own a hangar, and you're renting ground space from us, it's five and a half cents per square foot. Now, somebody out in the audience here may have had that lease for the last five, 10 years. So annually, that's been increasing by that CPI, okay? So they may be paying six, seven cents now per square foot, whatever that may have been. Somebody comes in new, you want a hangar there, now you're coming in the five and a half, so they're paying, you know, a cent and a half, or a half cent, whatever it may be, more than you. So what we did is we took, you know, just a cluster of a few from the last five years or so, and they're paying about six cents per square foot now for that ground lease. So we want to change that base rate now to be at the six cents. And then for hangar rentals, again, took a few from the last five years, they're paying about 28 and a half cents right now. So we want to change that base rate to 28 and a half cents. This would not affect any current leases. So anyone that has a lease right now, their lease amount remains the same. This is only for a new lease that comes in. That base rate would come in at the new lease rate, so for ground, again, six cents per square foot. For the rental, if we own a hangar, so they're actually renting our facility there, is 28 and a half cents per square foot. And each year, that base rate would increase by the CPI, like I said, annually. So it would go right along with the increase in for the other tenants. So I would recommend that you approve the hangar ground lease structure rate structure change and base rate for the new airport leases.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the audience concerning this item? Counsel?
You said you took a group to make the, come up with the six cents?
Yes, so we just did a selection. So we have the five and a half cents rate. So we took a selection of them from the last five years, so that are currently paying. So they've already gone up by the CPI over the last five years.
Are there any over six cents?
No, it was right about there. So we got to 0.59 cents.
Okay. I was figuring, just go with the highest rate going now, using the average base. First, it's trying to get a group of average or something. Can you just take whoever's being the highest rate? That would be, that would be, that way you're not going to have someone falling behind someone else ever again.
No, this is just slightly...
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Yes, this is one more. How are our rates compared to other airports or local municipalities?
Well, I know there was a study done a few years back by our previous airport manager and his assistant. That's how the five and a half cents came up at the time. We have not done a study recently, so I can't quite be accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the council?
Is this high enough? Should we do the study? Or we could do this now, come back with the study, and it only affects new leases anyway. I'd say let's get a, I'm not opposed to this at all, but our benchmark maybe should be higher.
Agree. There are quite a few lists servers that go around, you know, there are quite a few airports right now doing rental rate...
Service, yeah.
Yeah, surveys and everything. So kind of let other people do that work, and then we'll kind of figure from that.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Very reasonable.
I'm Mike, I still live in the same place, so I have the same hangar. I'm the airport manager. Heard to the great point that you have a list of people who want to build hangars on the airport, or they want a hangar on the airport. Is that true?
They would like to lease the hangar. So the way we keep our list is when somebody calls and says, hey, I'm interested in a hangar at the airport, and we don't have anything available, we let them come on, go on the waiting list. We ask them, are you interested in buying or leasing? We always throw out there, would you like to build? Because if you would, we'd love to meet with you. And we have met with you in the past. Otherwise, if they have said, I'd like to buy or lease, or just buy, what I will do, I'll hang onto that. I'll have, if a tenant comes to me and says, hey, I want to sell my hangar, which I have a few do, I take that list, and I associate those emails out to all of them. There's a hangar available for sale, you know, contact some. So if you're interested. As far as the rental, what we'll do, we recently had one at our, now we only own seven hangars, five of which we rent out. So if one of those comes out, which is not very often, then we go through the list and we call to get those people on there. Again, if somebody's interested in building, that's one of, I always push that if we can get them out there.
How much land is available for a commercial-sized hangar right now?
Well, I'm not going to give you an acreage or anything like that, but the ALP that we put out to the FAA for approval, we want to say just on the south side, the taxiway would include, at a minimum, 12 hangars right now, about 40 by 40.
Where are you choosing?
Those beyond the east end. Sorry, west end.
The other west end.
Mm-hmm.
Between the hangars, where the park is at?
That's east end.
That's east end.
Oh, you're on east, excuse me.
Yeah.
Triangle section property that's outside the fence that you purchased years ago from the gentleman, the FBI, their company, what's his name?
Vando.
Vando.
We do have, actually, what I was stating, we're all to the west side, west of Mr. Hackney's hangars, and west of, trying to think, Mike Hany, and just northwest of him, too.
The FAA gave you a certain amount of time that you had to open that land you purchased up to the airport, and remove the fence and make it available for the zoning owner?
No. No, with that, are you speaking to the land acquisition?
I think you're speaking to the Vandenberg property, the house. You know, and hence, if you wanted a hangar, and I come by tomorrow to hook you up.
Most people like the other end, especially right now by John Riddell's hangar and everything, just because there's paint on there. If they're going to build, it's a lot cheaper to build where there's already pavement.
Just from your state, you actually have people out that are waiting out, we're dealing with rates now on the agenda, which are...
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks. If there are no other comments from the council, I'll entertain a motion for the hangar rental rate structure.
Motion on staff's recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let the record show it was a 4-0 vote. And as soon as Mr. Hackney returns, and the police chief report.
Honorable mayor, ladies and council members, the item I have for you to see is the introduction of a proposed ordinance requiring business licenses for single-family and multifamily rental properties, and also requires initial and annual inspections for single-family and multifamily rental properties. Background, this statistically demonstrated that areas with rental housing are responsible for disproportionate share of police calls for service. The disproportionate demand and pump lease services necessitates a disproportionate expenditure of public funds for such properties, impairing the property values of these properties and the surrounding neighborhoods, as well as the community as a whole. A small percentage of rental properties are significant contributors to neighborhood life, disorder, and crime. The city of Tachsee is not immune from these negative impacts. From 2015 to 2019, the city of Tachsee and the Tachsee Police Department were required to take enforcement action on 48 drug and chronic nuisance properties within the city. An analysis of these chronic nuisance properties revealed that 87.5% of those were rental properties at the time enforcement action was required. Several studies have emphasized the importance of rental property management in controlling crime through tenant selection and managing tenant behavior. Weak management is often distinguished by lower levels of property maintenance, less frequent visits by owners and managers to property, and fewer efforts to screen tenants. Poorly managed properties receive less maintenance and will exhibit signs of greater physical deterioration. The exterior appearance of these properties usually provide a visual clue to the efficacy of the management. In response to the public safety and quality of life concerns, the proposed ordinance has been drafted. Proposed ordinance will require every owner of a single-family and multifamily residential rental property to obtain a rental business license for each rental property. Additionally, the ordinance will subject all residential rental properties to an initial inspection upon submission of a rental business license application, and annual inspection thereafter by the director of development services or his or her designee for compliance with all applicable laws. The scope of this inspection is limited to the exterior of the property. Exterior property maintenance and cleanliness, landscape maintenance in accordance with the city of Tachsee zoning code, land use such as off-street parking requirements, storage of inoperative vehicles, and accessory structures and use related to unpermitted businesses, maintenance and upkeep of the primary structures such as windows, paint, stucco, weather protection, roof, and other architectural features, and accessory structures such as sheds, cabanas, traction closures, et cetera. The purpose of this ordinance is intended to identify rental properties within the city and enhance the quality of life of residents of those properties and the entire community. The licensing requirements are intended to encourage all residential rental property owners to consistently meet applicable code requirements, including those relating to property maintenance and housing, and to make certain the properties have well-maintained and clean exterior areas. These licensing requirements will ensure that rental units do not create public nuisances that may be detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare of the community. And if full inspections and annual inspections shall be subject to an inspection fee established by the city council by resolution. Do you have any answer any questions related to this?
Are there questions or comments from the audience? Are there questions or comments from the audience?
Dennis Wallstrom, Black Hill Drive. Since we, since we have statistics on these properties that are in question, and we know where they're at, how does, I'll put it this way, you've got Bill over here in these government property, he doesn't take care of it, he gets questionable people in there, and you've got Bob over here, and he takes care of this property, and then it always looks nice and he's got good folks in there. How is putting, I think that Bob be a license, going to keep it open, do it the way he's going to naturally do it anyway?
Okay, well, the purpose, the purpose of this ordinance is to get in front of these chronic nuisance locations, okay? We can generally identify where are going to be problem properties very early on by the exterior appearance of that property, okay? By requiring them to have that business license as they are operating a business within the city and generating revenue, they are operating a business within the city, the place is required on them. We do the initial inspection to ensure that they're, that they're compliant with all of our municipal codes, and hopefully we won't get bad tenants in there, and, and it won't bring down the property values of the surrounding properties. Again, the whole purpose of this is to get in front of these chronic nuisance locations so I don't have another 48 chronic nuisance properties within the city.
That's true. But you're going to have them anyway. I mean, we've got the code enforcement guy, and he goes around, he sees a property, well, it's rental, not, but it doesn't mean our authority that's already on the books.
Dennis, this is a loophole in the law. People who run rental businesses don't have to pay for business licenses. That's wrong.
Why is that wrong?
Because you've got to have a gain.
Everybody who has a business has to pay for a license. It's a revenue generating idea. It's not, it's not to stop, it's not to stop people from running down their properties, it's to, to fund enforcement of that. I see, I, you know, that's, that's the opposite of my thought, because I can, I can, I can build what she says. But just put a buck in the pocket and do it.
That's exactly what a business license ordinance is.
Yeah, that's what I know. Yeah. Yeah. But we've been doing this for 110 years, we're, we're doing all right. You know, it's, it's just, it's, it gives you more people to enforce, all, all the money. It's going to cost just as much to enforce anyway. I mean, you're going to save, save those three departments. Somebody's going to cry, well, you can respond anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're out of, we're out of, we're out of, we're out of, it's going to be, it's going to be no good. And, and again, I would say the, the way that we're doing this is not effective. If I had 48 chronic news, drug or chronic nuisance locations within my city in a four year period of time, we've got to get ahead of this problem. The only way we're going to do that is to require these people to have a business license, submit to that annual inspection, and, and we can make sure that they are complying with the existing codes.
What's the inspection fee?
The inspection fee, Mr. Slosser is doing a, a fee study right now to determine what that inspection fee is going to be. We also have a, a provision within the ordinance that will allow, I believe you refer to him as Bob, who has a great tenant and maintains his property, it will allow Bob to do a self-inspection, which is, which is going to reduce that fee, that inspection fee, by 50%, and doesn't require my code enforcement officer to go out there and conduct that inspection. And what that does is it provides an incentive for that property owner who's properly managing his property, screening his tenants, and ensuring that he maintains the property values for those homeowners around him, it gives him a little bit of an incentive.
Okay, did you write that off? Or did you say this might be?
We're almost out of time, Mr. Wall.
Jay, you, you got a little harder?
No, I haven't. You know, the process for setting a fee, as you know, Dennis, includes, first of all, the law requires a professional to undertake that study, so there's protecting public interest, and then we have to do an evaluation of the average amount of time, staff time it takes to execute that work. It is absolute, I've already spoken to the chief about this issue, we have, we have more work than we know what to do with right now. I'm not the least bit interested in collecting money on this issue, other than to, to cover the city's costs associated with this, but I would like to editorialize briefly and simply say, we're not doing this for fun. We genuinely, contrary to what you've said, we genuinely believe this will help reduce chronic nuisance problems, and therefore reduce the amount of time that we spend on this. You stated that you think it's all going to happen anyway. We disagree.
And the fee is set by resolution by the council, so it's going to be coming to the council whenever, whenever Jay comes up.
Yeah, I just, I just have to see, literally, he's lost, he's all.
I'd like to add also, one of the problems with some of these properties are non-resident owners who live in Orange County or San Francisco, and all they do is cash a check every month. Part of the business license will tell us that Bill lives in Orange County and has never been convinced of this rental, and we know who to be able to go after to get it fixed.
I believe that's law.
With you. Yeah.
You're ready to do it, actually. Yeah, see, yeah. Okay, she, just so I, I brought the law into the background, I couldn't hear you. You were part of your inspection, or whoever's involved in this inspection, it does not entail a picture of the residents, correct? It's completely exterior, nothing for them.
That is correct.
Okay. Everything that lives here, get this, is pretty much code enforcement's job now, correct?
Yeah.
As far as, what are you talking about? The inspection, the exterior?
Well, you know, law enforcement aspect, you have, you said chronic nuisance, and I'm actually looking for a definition on that, and Tom, if you can keep your little movements over there for yourself.
No, that's what's going for it.
Excuse me, Mr. Graff. Mr. Graff.
They're not paying for it.
No, every, stop, everybody.
Whoa.
Now, if you're going to come up and ask me a question.
I'm not going to sit here and try to ask this kind of question with him back there at my job.
No, listen to me.
You listen to me.
Okay, sit down, Mr. Graff, sit down. Sit down, Mr. Graff. Yes, Mr. Graff. Sit down, Mr. Graff, or I will have someone sit you down. Yeah, enough.
Whoa. So you're, you're not going to, you're not giving me?
Enough.
Questions?
No, because you're acting very, very.
Because I told Mr. Schroeder not to.
Yes, sit down.
So he's entitled to interrupt, talk to him anytime he wants.
Please sit down, okay?
Can I finish my?
No.
No, no.
Daddy.
So this is, this is, you don't have good points brought out, that's for sure. You know what this is? This is a tax under the guise of a business license. You can't get a tax pass, so you can call it a business license.
Yeah. That's right.
Yeah. This is the land over here.
My name is Nick Nelson, many of you know me already. I own for, I live in town, I own Four Seasons Realty, that is in town, it's a property manager business, and I've been here 35 years, two years. There's a lot of misunderstanding about property owners. They aren't all wealthy or rich and sitting there eating bonbons, you know, every morning before they go to work. They're all hardworking, both have made investments, so that they hopefully can retire at some point. We've got other property managers here that do an excellent job also. We try to, we go by every property numerous times here, and actually write down the conditions of it. We have chronic places that are a problem. We work with code enforcement, every time they call us, I'm a problem, and Aaron's, who we've worked with for so long, I don't know the new one. We get on it because we want our properties well maintained. Anyone that has a property manager wants a property well maintained. I don't feel they should be penalized by paying for a business license or pay for an inspection. Right now, code enforcement, they go by and they say, it looks like hell out there. We send somebody out to do it. Say, Ken doesn't do it, we send somebody to do it. I don't think these owners need to be penalized anymore by the inspection fees, and if it's exterior of the property, that's fine, I don't care if you're driving by or walking down the sidewalk, but if you walk around the property, then it's a matter of 24-hour, 48-hour notice to tenants. Well, we're not allowed to give that information to even the police department, but if we're notified, there's a problem, we'll take care of it. And I think every property owner should be notified. If they, and if we have drugs on the property, which God knows are all over, it takes an act of volunteer management. We cannot go by, because the drug policies have changed the leases now. So we can't, if they have, it's illegal to use any drugs. Well, all the laws changed now, like can you smoke a cocaine? We're not going to be judged or judged. We want people that are there to take care of the property, not be breaking any laws, and to get them out, we have to go a 30-day or 60-day notice, because we can't provide the proof the court requires. I'm awful at being. So I just feel it's extra penalizing to get property owners. And then we don't have time to do the additional follow-up, but we can do, and every property owner does, they check their properties. If you notify us of anything in town, we'll take care of it. And if we don't, you're welcome to go to the property.
Thank you, ma'am, but you're out of time. I appreciate your comments.
All right.
Thank you. Good evening.
Clint Davies, 504 Carrollway. Nicky's actually our property manager, and I'm actually going to break everything she said, we've looped on it a few times, but she is absolutely right. The owners of my, the property I'm running, they are some of the most honest, decent people I've met in this city. When I was moving out, this man came, comes out, and he's cleaning himself, getting all the, he's all over his hands, naked down there, really putting his blood, sweat, and tears into it. And I try to treat it as if, you know, how a cheap rich is, I try to appreciate just as much, and so it is a tax, again, a tax. If the city charges money, it's going to raise rental prices. We're already in a tight rental market. It's also going to lower the property values because there's this surcharge of what they can make off the income property. So I'm thoroughly against this. This is a bad, again, I encourage people on city council to shoot this down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah.
Madam Mayor, just for the council's information, the, the business license fee is based on gross receipts, and speaking with Ashley Whitmore earlier today, the average cost for this business license is going to be between $30 and $45 a year, and we anticipate that the staff time associated with the fee study is going to show is that maybe the, the inspection fee is probably going to be around the same, about around the same cost. We're, we're not talking as extravagant amount of money here, we're talking about, you know, $75 possibly a year to ensure that we get ahead of these chronic nuisance properties and don't have these problem locations. And I'd also like to point out that most of these chronic nuisance locations are complaint-driven. These things aren't discovered by just, by just, you know, my code enforcement officers. There's numerous complaints for drug activity, et cetera, that is occurring on these properties that we respond to, so just some additional information for it.
Thank you.
My father, catchy. It's more surprising people back there, but this is an unfair tax. The person who pays the property tax, it goes to the local police department and the code department. They're already paid into that, and now you're saying you have to pay an additional tax in order to, for, for you to go and respond to a call, which is what we pay for you to do.
Yeah.
Your, your code enforcement people are out there. They do their job, and they can do it, they can do their job and drive by and say, this property is not in code without somebody paying additional money. And I was looking at the fees and average property for the business licenses, and I think you sort of understated it because the average rent prices in Tasci are a little higher than, I think, $45, because it's based on how much income you have. Actually, look at the fees, I thought it would be around 50 to 125, depending on how much money, or how many properties somebody has.
Just for clarification, on a business license, fees is the gross amount they make for that property, not their income as a whole, not, you know, I'm making this.
So you're, if it's only on the property.
It's only on property.
That's fair. Still, there's an unfair tax. It really is. It's, it's taxing somebody again for a certain property to tax for. Whether they live in San Francisco or Orange County, they have to pay the property taxes that come here to fund our police department and our code enforcement.
Yeah, yes.
And everybody that's living with me, a tax, and spend a liberal. And I'm telling you that this is wrong. Not only that, it's going to discourage people from investing in our town.
Absolutely.
First of all, every business owner that operates or owns a business, if you're, if you drive into the city to do business, you're required to have a business license. A person who owns a rental property, as, as Mr. Schroeder tried to point out earlier, and I don't think the point was necessarily captured, is, is a weird caveat in our business license law that somehow does not include them as a business owner. If you're a property owner and you're renting your property for profit, you are a business and you are making money, and how you are not subject to a business license is simply because we have not brought this moment to you. I would submit this comment, though, to you, which is, for all the residents in our city who never get a visit from the police or from the code enforcement department because they maintain their property, whether they be a rental, or more likely in the case of being a homeowner, those folks' tax interests should be protected as well, meaning they pay taxes, and they're having to pay for the increased code enforcement efforts in order to deal with the chronic properties that we have an issue with, which are disproportionately, radically disproportionately associated with the rentals in this town. And so how about those taxpayers that we protect by making sure that the persons who are most causing code enforcement issues are paying the lion's share of the expense associated with code enforcement? To me, as a taxpayer who's never had a visit from code enforcement in my life, I'm, I'm of the opinion that I think the folks who are getting visits from code enforcement ought to be paying for code enforcement. So that's the spirit and intent of this law and the concept that we've produced here. We think it's eminently fair for that reason.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Mike. Steve Rhodes, I'm with Advanced Property Management. Over the past few weeks, I've been following articles in the Tax费 News and the Loop in reference to the Neighborhood Improvement Project. As I understand, it's designed to identify problems and formulate solutions. Chief, in the February 13th article, you're saying, like, well, we are not out there to issue citations or to issue notices, our interest is to gain voluntary compliance.
Right? That's correct, sir.
In the Loop newspaper, dated February 16th to March 2nd, it stated that our crime rates are low, and we are, and we were recently named the safest city in Kern County and one of the top safest cities in California, 15. I think we're 42, 44, 41. Kind of recapping what I've read over the last few weeks, the Neighborhood Improvement Project is designed to identify problems and formulate solutions. We're not out there to issue citations or notices, gain voluntary support, compliance. And I think we were all for that. We were all for beautifying the city. But we're going to fast forward to tonight, which is, you haven't asked very many before. There's eight property management companies in the city, not one of them is in Biden's town. Eight. You have, you stated that you have 48 drug and chronic nuisance problems, or properties. That's over a 40-year period. Is that an average of 12 properties per year, is that a total today of 48?
Because over the four-year period of time, we've taken enforcement action on 48 properties.
Okay, so average 12 per year.
That's about the average, yes, ma'am.
Of those 48, 87.5% were rents, as 42 properties.
Correct.
Do you know how many properties, rent properties, there are in the city?
No.
I couldn't tell you exactly how many rental properties there are in the city limits.
No, sir. That's less than eight percent. Forty-two chronic drug properties, less than eight percent. So you're going to penalize ninety-two percent that are doing a good job for eight percent. Why don't you feed those eight percent? How about the other ninety-two?
Yeah. Thank you, sir, for your comments, but you're out of time.
Does anybody want to give me three minutes?
No, 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 please.
Oh, come on. Just real quick. Two more questions and you don't have to answer them.
Could you please sit down? Your time is up.
We have to, we have to vote.
Could I chime in a little bit? I mean, we really, we really need to hear from these folks. But Mr. Schroeder, you know, we are trying to understand the situation. And I think with these folks that are here, we really have to say, "I don't think you have much more to say."
Two quick questions you don't have to answer.
No, please sit down. You know what, you guys? We're trying. We're giving you time to talk. We're trying to be fair. We're trying to listen. I haven't heard one good word out of anybody. Just we calm down a little bit, we'll hear this next man, and we'll move on.
Good evening. This next man is John Lang.
Thank you.
He resides in Cameron Canyon, which is actually Mojave Drive.
Yes.
But we pay taxes on all of our parcels for everything you guys are enforcing.
And your, and your family.
Thank you very much. I have been here, decapitated when I was born in nineteen sixty, almost fifty-nine years when I was born in the attached state. My wife's family started here in about eighteen seventy-eight. So we built this community. I think you need to consider grandfather clause in this ordinance because the ordinance isn't fair to people who have grandparents who have passed their properties down, that we take care of, that we take pride in, just like everything else in this community, that we take pride in to take care of.
And to them.
We take care of these properties. What you're asking is we need to pay the fee, which I'll pay the fee, and you'll come inspect and we'll check off the paint on the wall that was, you know, chapped a little bit. But more than that, it's an absolute invasion into how are you going to determine these things? You're going to determine it by asking for my social security, how much I pay rent. You're going to go down this whole government overreach dammit so that you can have this ordinance so you can find out everything about me in anticipation that it might stop crying. And I don't think it's going to. I think that Daly City and Berkeley and Lancaster are examples that have implemented this. Hundreds of thousands of people. I don't see very many cities with under fifty thousand people that are implementing this. They do wrong. They are. However, this is not a trend to set or to follow. We have code enforcement, police, fire, gas companies, electric companies, water companies. It's not the time to enforce this. All it does is make us ask to pass down for tenants who are already struggling to be here and make clear.
I agree. First off, I feel that there wasn't very much note of distinction. And the ideals and the concept of what to base everything on is very grand in regards to it. I feel that it is not a great thing for the people who do care for their properties, do care for their tenants, do care for the city that they live in and helped create, to pass this on like it's another business, you're running a business. These are family-owned places that we take pride in and care for. And I'm sure that there are a lot of entities that are being cared for by property managers that have been handed down to family members, and these property managers are taking care of it also. So I think that if you want to implement something like that, there needs to be a heck of a lot more research in it, instead of just trying to pass down another tax to people who are in this community, trying to take care of people and give people nice places to live and to run businesses within this community. Because there's probably more coming, as I see next time it's about landscaping and everything else, where does it hit about business, landowners, property owners, business owners? Where is all this? There needs to be some more finite information going on around here.
So then, references, L C, air being.
You're out of time. I actually gave you.
Oh, did you?
I actually gave you.
Should have had six minutes.
Well.
So there are considerations. Please consider grandfather clause for people who have been here and have social security.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, everybody, just to introduce you.
Yeah, we are.
Before you again.
Yes. This is not, this is the introduction of the ordinance tonight.
Oh, good. You hear from us again.
And the second reading will be a public hearing.
And Madam Mayor, just for the record, the summary of this was published over two weeks ago, so it's been out for an extended period of time. So it wasn't just a last-minute notice, it's probably in the song there. It was published over two weeks ago.
Alright.
I saw the company's tax fee. How is this notify the people in the tax fee that this area is coming up at the paper?
So they're illegal numbers?
They're in, yes. They're in, it's actually the next meeting. So it'll be in the paper.
We also.
Am I going to be taxed on every rental? Business permit for every rental? Somebody?
Yes, that's correct, for every rental.
I don't think this is right. I mean, I'm paying already for your protection. Yet I see a sign downtown, "Save the city in the country." Channel twenty-three says, "You have not done too good."
Yeah.
I don't know what the problem is. It's a common thing, like you're misadvertising or something. I feel if you maybe need more help, give more help. You're not going to solve the problem, but check at my place. They're already in trouble. And you, that should guarantee you're going to give me a good rental, not going to give me a problem. I'm for it. I pay ten percent of my rental management to have good renters. And I'd be penalizing if someone's not. I don't think it's right.
Scott Lance, resident of Tatchee. Been here for quite a long time. Know quite a few of your folks and recognize a lot of faces here in your audience. Just want to say, I don't believe that this will actually resolve the situation we have in this town. I agree with resolving or finding a solution to clean up the areas, because I'm sure we all know where the majority of those problem areas are. And I'm all for it. I would love to work with the community to find the answer. I have, in my neighborhood, I have three houses that are terrible, and you can drive by and they look great. And when you roll your windows down, there's lots of problems going on. Kids running down the street with, you know, three-years-old in a shirt and chungies. Where are their parents? They're gone. Gone. So there are other ways to clean up some of these problem areas. I don't have all the answers. I don't think all, any of us have all the answers. But I would love to be a part of the community, to come up with a resolution to solve these problems. And thank you for all of our work you do. Because I called everybody here. Numerous people have come to help me. Your team has come to help me when there's been a problem. And the Sheriff's Department beforehand. So thank you for what you do. I just do not believe that this is the answer to the problem at hand. Thank you.
Thank you. Council comments?
Don't you go.
I'm sorry. You're so tall, how could I answer?
Being Tim Roberts, I'm in the city. I've been sitting out there. Anybody said everything that I would have said in the papers that had. I'd like to come, come up with Nikki Nelson, her statements, because she told me she was stunted, but she did very well. Our city manager once said that this business license fee is a tax, and it is a tax. And many of the folks up here have said it's just another tax, and we already pay taxes for your services, sir. And you do fine job at it. So I don't think that's a reasonable, a reasonable reason to have to do this. Now, I have the triflex of James Villaln, Valley Boulevard, and I've had to trees my city property with your permission, having tore off all the parking spaces in front of my triflex. My question to you is, I guess, one of the many questions, is that triflex considered paying one building, that'll be paying the on or three buildings as a triflex? Any of that?
Would you like me to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify a couple of things that I heard in the last few minutes. First of all, if you are a property management company or the owner of multiple properties, you must only obtain one business license to cover all yours. It's the single business. If you own twenty-seven rental properties or one, it's one business license. It's the inspection fee that would be applied for building. So in the case of your triflex, my interpretation would be it's one inspection because it's one building that we're inspecting at a time or one physical piece of property. If, yeah, so a duplex, a triflex would be one inspection because it's one physical building, one property. So I want that clarified.
It's a multi-handed building, so it's still one central building. Okay, are you planning on voting on this tonight?
No, this is the introduction.
It's the introduction. So what is it, where does it go from here?
There'll be a public hearing. It'll be published in the newspaper, and we'll probably go through this again. And they won't be able to vote to adopt the ordinance at that point. This is just the introduction.
My other comment was, Madam Mayor mentioned that these folks are out of town landlords and all the empty codes, the tax laws, to find out who the landlord is to stand with or for any issues that may be prepared with the property. Like you said, the fire department had a statement, the fire hasn't, couldn't find the office of the taxpayer, tax laws, I have to nail the letter, but it's lost us. So, okay, well, I think that answers most of my questions. So I'm looking forward to your.
Thank you.
I'm a little confused on, I think, after I mentioned that you have to let me know how much rent we make.
So our business license certificates, how much you pay is based on the gross receipts.
So you guys are now IRS?
Yes. So for business, our municipal code does allow for the.
Because if I'm selling scarves and I made a hundred thousand dollars, I'm paying the IRS on a hundred thousand dollars. If I'm having a rental unit and I'm making a hundred thousand dollars, I'm paying taxes on a hundred thousand dollars. What, why do you have to know how much I'm making? You're not the IRS.
The law allows that.
Can I, can I, if you could just chime in here? This, this program has proven to work very well. You know, it's small, but it works very well. It's intended to make certain that property owners maintain their property so that the tenants enjoy a high quality of life. We're not subsidizing taxpayer money, general fund, somebody Islam, right? What's happening here is, is great. I'm a little bummed about the aggressiveness because what we do is bring these ideas to the council and to the public so we can vet it together, right? We're not making a law. We're just suggesting that the council may want to consider something on the basis of what we learn, right? So we're not the bad guy here. We're not. We live, and, you know, and I'm a conservative, by the way, but we live here. We work here. Our kids go to these schools. We get, I grew up here also. You got this, right? And so, what we're trying to do is create and maintain the best quality, and this is not necessarily directed at you, I'm saying this because you're there, but it's directed to all of us. We are one team. We want to be one team.
So if a business buys a rental, does that qualify as a business license and therefore you're exempt?
No, that business already pays a business license.
Exactly.
They wouldn't pay anymore if they bought a house and added it on.
No, no, no. If you were a business, an LFC, and you buy an apartment complex, are you therefore exempt from that tax? Not necessarily the inspection, but the initial fee?
I prefer getting really honest and we're trying to vet all this. We're trying to vet all this. We appreciate the comments and we take this.
Oh, the name is James Villaln. I do not live in the city. However, I might be a business man someday and I might consider buying rental property. If I know about this in the city, I'm not going to buy in the city. I'm going to go buy in those mills. I'm going to go buy somewhere else. Maybe, you get my point? It's going to be an incentive for business people to locate in the nice, small-town community of town. So you might consider the detrimental fact is this will have on future business. I don't have any rentals now, but.
Thank you. We're going to take one more comment, if anybody has one more comment. If not, we're going to move on to the council.
Oh, I see. Yes, I'm a little confused. Is this a license fee or is it a tax?
It's a license.
It's my preference, it's a fee and not a tax.
It's a business fee.
Thank you. And then, also, Chief Kroger, will we need additional personnel to enforce this as well?
I don't believe so. And again, it's our hope that most of these properties will be, will be in compliance and will go to the self-inspector vote, and then they won't require additional personnel. I've got two code enforcement officers right now. Vision we have with.
Thank you. Any other questions to the council?
You made a comment that we give them a discount if the properties will appear. I think a lot of these folks that have kept a care of their properties aren't the problem. But could we give them an incentive by waiving the fee for the first year? You know, as we did some statistics on, I don't know if that's something we could do. Or we could base the fee for calls for service and make it a fee-based for if they continue to have calls for service, we, they have a higher rate. Or if the folks have great property, if it's Bob, he gets a break. If it's Bill, he's going to get an inspection hefty, you know. So as far as the license, what does that give us as far as just finding, is that just to locate the problem of either the person responsible?
I try to answer that two ways. Granting a business license also gives the city authority to ungrant a business license, which is an extra enforcement method for somebody who refuses to comply with keeping their property in compliance with all of the existing laws that already expect property owners to maintain their properties. So I think the business license is, should be what it is, which is if you own a business, you have one property or twenty-seven properties, your gross receipts determine what you pay. You're like any other business in the city of Tatchee. And I don't, I don't agree with the disincentive fees. We have literally hundreds upon hundreds of businesses operating in the city that pay for business licenses. It's nearly universal in every city everywhere, and it's very common for rental properties in cities for this item. However, to speak to what you suggested, the inspection fee is the item, I'm still working on producing the study, as we did the last time we passed them. The council has the authority, what I will present to you is the cost of providing service, and that results in a fee. The council has the authority to collect anything up to that number. So a thought I'm having as we're vetting this is that if you, we had, we were planning to propose that if someone rolls to self-inspection, meaning after the first inspection, it looks great, they're a good property owner, they're going to roll to self-inspection, then only when they get a complaint do they roll back out of self-inspection to mandatory inspection. We were going to propose half the inspection fee. You guys want to make that zero? Make that zero, you know? So that a good property owner pays nothing but the business license fee, which again, if you say you rent a house for $1,000 a month, which is a high rent, that's $12,000 a year, that's like a $30 business license. I actually don't know more specifically, but I know anything below $7,000 is $20 bucks. So, and then that would be it. Year after year, we would just document a piece of paper that here's their self-inspection, you're good, you own 27 properties, you self-inspect them all. It could be a small fee or no fee, whatever you guys wanted to go do. We do, we're not presenting this again because we like doing this. I promise you, I'm not enjoying this. But because we genuinely believe in an era in which courtesy is dead, even though longer take the pride of ownership of their property, or not everyone does anymore at least, that this will help us have a beautified community with less crime. We think that's a noble cause. So I hope that helps you think about ways that over the next couple of weeks, between introduction and this, that you guys as the council would have a direction for us.
Thank you.
I'd just like to, but from what Jay said about the enforceability of that business license. We've used it before. We've used it against hotels, we've used it against businesses that were operating beyond what they said they were going to operate on. If you're committed to pull that business license, they have to shut down. You don't have to go to court, you don't have to file subpoenas, you don't have to take that position, you just jank that business license. And that's a very important...
And I think, Mr. Schroeder, that's actually what the majority of these people tonight are concerned with. I feel I agree with you in regards to the fee-based situation. And I think, Chief, if you've got a list of folks that Aaron and Anthony have gone out and talked to over and over, you've got garbage piled up in the front yard, you've got a couple of clunkers behind the fence, you know what? That's where the fees are going to come from because those are the guys that are consuming your services. It is unfair for the rest of the landlords and the tenants who are in our community to have to top that up. And I think Jay mentioned that, you know? It's unfair for everybody else to pay for a select few. But if we've got 12, if we've got 12 rental units in our town that are a problem, we need to hit them. We need to hit them. Put this piece of paper aside, we need to hit them because we have got to get that element out of our community to preserve what we've got. Somebody also brought some grandfather issues in. Okay, you know what? If you've got a clean track record on some stuff, let's go with that. But at the same time, we fee-based the rest of it and we can come to a conclusion.
I still feel that a business license, you can call it a tax, you can call it whatever you want, but here's the deal. It's not going to break the bank. It sounds like the fee and inspection is the thing that's the big, the big hiccup here. But we had a number of rentals on Cherry Lane, and they were, I think they were out of Las Vegas, okay? And we went after them and they just thumbed their noses at us and told us to stick it until we went in on health and welfare issue and were able to pull their business license. Because they had a license out there, or it wasn't a business license, it was something else. But we were able to have them see some business until they fixed mold, roaches, unfit living quarters for these tenants, okay? Just drug houses. So there's the other side of this. So I think that the business license is our tool to leverage these terrible landlords. So you folks that are grandfathered in or don't have to have a fee because you're Bob's friend and you are great, I'm with you. But Bill, I think, he needs to either voluntarily get his yard cleaned up before inspection or a fee. But I think the business license should be intact because we don't have any leverage. I mean, it took a big deal to get that firm from Las Vegas succeeded over Lancaster. The other big cities had trouble. I think even in Las Vegas had trouble getting them to comply. But if we have a business license where you can say you can no longer do business here until you get your act together, those are the ones we're going after. We're not going after Kim's properties, your properties, all these people with the property management that are taking care of your properties, and they're not the ones. The people who are suffering here are the neighbors next door to the rental property from a guy somewhere else who has, he'll just thudge his nose at us because he's in Orange County and he don't care. No, it's not, because you're a good guy. Anyway, I think we should really consider keeping intact the business license. It's not going to break the bank, especially if it's one license per building or whatever it is, or one license per business. So if you're in business and you have two multiple dwellings around town, would that still be one license? Because you're the landlord. So one business license for landlord isn't going to kill you. So, but I think if we go after the problems, make them pay, and the ones that are the crime abusers, you get warning, you clean it up, you get another one or whatever the process is, you lose your license, you're not going to have an income. So that's my two cents. Let's bring it back, see what staff can do with that.
Can I have your comment really quickly?
Yes.
And I can assure you, sir, we are aggressively going after those low locations. We do it consistently. I've got two of the best code guys in the business and they take care of those problem locations. The idea of this is so that problem location never surfaces again. Because as Mr. Smith said, the problems and the headaches that that causes the neighbors or even in a short period of time, if we can prevent that from occurring in the first place simply by acting as an emergency, acquiring a simple business license fee and a simple inspection, exterior inspection, if we can eliminate half of those problems and improve the quality of life for a few neighbors for a few weeks of time, it's worth it to me. And again, this is a decision for the council. I'm, you know, doing what I can to address crime in this city and try and ensure that people have a good quality of life here, and this is one tool. This is not the answer, this is not the cure-all. This is one piece of a lot of things that we're doing, including our David improvement project, and a lot of other things that we're doing to ensure that we maintain a safe community here and a good quality of life for people that live here.
Yeah, Chief, I don't necessarily disagree with you. My concern is we're going to, we're going to broad-brush all these good people in the We're in a broad-brush all the good people over a handful of bad people. And I, I don't necessarily agree with the small business license. However, when we start adding a business license for this, a fee for that, a discretionary evaluation for Chip Stucko, this, this thing can quickly grow out. And I realize we don't have a good definition on a lot of this stuff, and I think probably the next version of this will, it'll be expanded so we'll have a better picture of how it's going to formally look when we get to the point of bringing this in front of the council to talk about and to vote on. But I don't want to broad-brush anybody who has been a good landlord, a good homeowner, when we've got a handful of troubled children in the community that we need to deal with. And I've said it all along, Chief, your code enforcement guys, they see the problems and they take care of them. And you know what? We give them, they deserve accolades because they have a miserable job. That, the code enforcement guys are the brunt. They get the brunt of all the bad stuff. And I appreciate the work they do, but I would also like to see us come back and let's try to work the document a little bit more. And I think we can do that. There's some things that we can get together as a council and talk about or individually or whatever it may be, and define this a little bit better. And I think there's a solution in the mix here somewhere that doesn't impose overdue burden or stress on the current people that own property in town.
Okay, now I have to go to Mr. Schroeder on this. You know, is this the time to make those changes or make those corrections? Because the ordinance, the proposed ordinance that you have in front of you is the proposed ordinance, so there's some changes or clarifications that need to be made. I don't know if today is the time to review those or...
Can we introduce this later?
Yes. Well, you cannot, you, the changes I see being requested couldn't be done here verbally.
But bring them back. We can introduce it at a later date with some of the stuff that the folks have brought up.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments. I know Mr. Rose, I know Nikki, I know the Lances. I'm very happy, you know, I've seen your properties, Nikki, I've seen some properties. Example, I have a older couple live next to me. They both passed away. Their kids took over the house, they had a renter in there and the house went downhill. They weren't bad people, they were just dirty people. And they're filthy, so we took the time as neighbors to help clean it up and they moved away. You know, we're going to have those. One thing that we haven't talked about tonight is property values. A lot of us sitting here are homeowners, and if we have that rental property next to us and we have bad renters there and we don't have any way to enforce this, what's going to happen when we have to move? Something happens that we have to sell, our property values are going to go down. I think that's what we have to look at too. That's what, one thing that has been brought up here. I was a renter for many years and I always took pride in anything that I think I left it better, better than it was when I got there and when I left. There's not a whole lot of people that do that, but they are, there is some out there that do that. So I think we need to look at that, and I believe that we ought to table this. I don't think we ought to put it on the agenda for tonight because I think we need to talk about the fees more. Fees, taxes, you guys are all correct. It's more money out of our pocket. But we need to make sure that our neighborhoods, you know, we're talking about what the chief about, you know, problem child, but what about the people that just don't take care of their property? They're good people, they just don't take care of it. We have those in all the neighborhoods. I think we need to work with those people, and I think that's what we need to do. I don't think we ought to penalize everybody. And we've had some good points brought out by everybody here tonight that we can maybe lower the fees or we can, you know, a business license makes people responsible. That's what it does. That's what a business license does. We're not trying to get any money out of anybody, we're just trying to make people responsible. The people that's... We're a license. The people that are doing their job are the ones complaining, but unfortunately, that's not how it is in the world anymore. We all have to pay for the ones that are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to table this?
You can table it. It's not table, you just want to say it to another meeting.
No, I'm not taking any more comments from the public, we're wrapping this up.
You'll have a chance on the next round.
Yeah, trust us.
Probably get two more rounds.
You can refer back to staff now, Eric, or Phil, Jerry.
Does he? Is that all right with everyone? All right, then we'll refer it back to staff. No action will be taken tonight. Thank you.
So for clarification, because we've had really good comments, really good suggestions from everyone, rather than spend money, city taxpayer money, advertising and talking about this and putting out public notices, then we have an introduction for a ordinance change, which is law on the city. We will advertise it like we normally do with city council meetings and bring it back to, I don't want to use the word workshop, but more, okay, this is what we heard, this is what we've got going on, we want to continue here from the council and the public, and then if everybody is satisfied, we can go through that legal process.
Yeah.
That takes a lot more time because we have to introduce the ordinance, we have to advertise in the legal section, the Tatchy news, all that stuff is very expensive and very time-consuming. So I'd rather bypass that, come back with another agenda that basically talks about this is what we're thinking, this is what we heard, and this is what we think we should do, we'll hear from everybody, and then we'll go from, go towards the ordinance if that's the decision.
So we can continue the introduction?
No, we're just, you're not going to...
Just eliminate it from the agenda?
Yeah, we're just, you're taking no action.
No action.
Taking no action.
That's fine.
Madam Mayor, I would like to urge one additional thing. We heard that there's eight property management companies in the greater Tatchy area. I would urge you folks to talk amongst yourselves and get a pad paper out and write down what your concerns are, you know, and what you think you could benefit from, from additional service from the chief. If you have suggestions, we have got, I say this every meeting, or almost every meeting, we have got to get the public's involvement going here. I mean, we, tonight we had, we had a great turnout, but sometimes we don't. We have to get people involved. And you folks that are property managers or property owners, here's your opportunity to get together with the chief or with Greg or with somebody else or one of us and try to, to fine-tune this to meet your requirements because you're the people that we work for. That's, that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if they want to call me with some issues or concerns that they have with that, so that I got the opportunity to look at that and discuss with Mr. Schroeder and maybe find you that, you can call me and we can discuss it.
Thank you. All right, city managers report? All right, council member reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I got a call today from, or yesterday, from Keith Saklitz. He's on the, he's one of the volunteers at Railroad Depot, and he brought up a situation that he wanted me to discuss. He was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately he didn't make it. Please, Chief, we still have a lot of problems with skateboarders that are like getting on the rails and chiming the rails up. What would it be the cost or something if we could have the city staff look into it, putting some type of, I don't know, some type of... Yeah, something that keep the kids from skateboarding down the rails.
Yeah, Don, we can, yeah, we, yeah, they make skate stuff in Ray's legs. So if Don and I can talk about that and, you know, take that as a opinion of it.
Okay. That's all I have on that.
Thank you, Police Department, for making us the safest city in Kern County. Forty-two in California. Thank you to the Police Department for keeping us safe, and we are the safest city in Kern County. Thank you very much. At some point, I want us to start thinking about, you know, if we're going to get some more money from SNE1, maybe have an overview of our priorities for street repair. How would we attack it? I know there's some streets that, the streets we can't even go down because the street that people's there. Okay, so just if you could put that on an agenda where we have time to do that, because a lot of folks are asking about, we talked about street money here tonight, and there's never enough money for roads, but if we can tell them what we're doing, because the projects where we get grants and it's arterials, they look great, but it's not the person in the neighborhood that the disstreets getting, or hurting is going to fix. If we could have an update sometime.
Oh, I'd like to thank you for filling potholes on Valley Boulevard. I've noticed there's quite a few potholes being filled. And also for the public comment, I was expecting a little bit more than, than I thought we would get, so I was very pleased with the reserve and respect that some of you gave in your public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Most of you knew that last week Virgin Galactic launched their spaceship out of Mojave, and you know, that rocket launched just to our north, right over Kelso Valley. And we live in such a unique place in Tatchy in this entire area when it comes to aviation to be able, by the way, those guys that flew that rocket live in Tatchy, which is, you know, it's kind of a neat thing because now they're all astronauts. And the uniqueness of what Virgin Galactic is doing in as far as that being part of our community is kind of, is kind of cool stuff. And just make sure that when, when you see or hear from some of these folks that work at Stair Composites or at, at Virgin Galactic or the spaceship company, you know, take that extra minute and talk to these folks because they are doing things that will impact our future forever. Neat stuff. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have anything to add at this time. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Moving to the second and all favor of adjourning.